And then, to clear?
Oh.
Yes. Okay, moving on. At this time, at this time, Vice Chair Lund will lead us in the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Vice Chairman Lund.
Okay. Dear God, we pray that you are with us this evening as we meet to decide the issues facing our county. Please keep the men and women who work in law enforcement in our community safe in the performance of their duties. As we enter the holiday season, a special prayer goes out to those who serve us in the military. May they return home safely to their families this year. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please note Supervisor Zima has arrived for this evening, and Supervisor Buckley is walking through the door. What I'd like to do, folks, we have people here for the addition to the agenda this evening, 10:00 K., so I would like to move 10:00 K. after 7:00 B., and I will accept the motion to accept that as amended by Supervisor Field, seconded by Supervisor Nicholson. Under discussion, hearing none, all's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And I thank you for that. At this time, I will accept comments from the public. Anything on, not on this evening's agenda? If you'd like to speak, please step forward and state your name and address for the record. And please, hold comments to five minutes. Does Supervisor Zima have to do anything?
No.
No, that was just, just one.
He doesn't.
Thank you. Anyone from the public who'd like to speak to anything not on this evening's agenda? One more time, anyone? Anyone? Hearing none, we'll move on. Takes us to approval of the minutes of September 18th. I have a motion made by Supervisor Hoyer to approve, seconded by Supervisor Castor, any additions, subtractions to the minutes. Seeing no lights or lit, all's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Announcements of supervisors?
Did you forget the presentation?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. We'll get to the presentation. I just wanted to dispose of some of this. Supervisor, did you hit your light Supervisor Campbell? There we go. Oh, I lost the whole thing. Yep. Yeah, I'll get him too. Try it again Supervisor Campbell. Why does it keep going away? There we go. I'm hoping this new-fangled system. Supervisor Campbell?
I would like to introduce tonight our two interns for media relations and communications for the county. Working in partnership with St. Norbert College Career Services, we have been able to acquire at no cost to the county two very qualified individuals to assist us in providing better county government communications with the public and, and to, from the public to the county. I'd like to introduce Ms. Chantrey Smith. She would come up. And Ms. Shayna Beckers. Chantrey will be starting tomorrow, and Shayna will be starting in the spring. They will be fostering better communications to and with the public through media relations, traditional media relations, and social media relations. I'm proud to have them on board. They were excellent candidates. We had quite a few people that were interested in, in this position. It's paid for through St. Norbert College. They have an internship program that they received $150,000 grant for, and thanks to Supervisor Robinson for directing me in that direction so that we could take advantage of that and get this program started when I wanted to. So I'm very excited about both them, excellent candidates, both interested in getting into communications, and I think they'll be helpful for both the executive branch and for our legislative branch as well. If you have official communications that you would like to get out, we will now have an office for public relations in the county, which is fantastic. So, thank you to the ladies for appearing tonight, and these will be the faces you'll be seeing for the next year.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you for joining us. Vice Chairman Lund?
Okay. Well, I, I'm proud to announce that Swamaco Elementary School achieved the National Blue Ribbon Award. On September 24th, the United States Secretary of Education, Arnie Duncan, announced that Swamaco Elementary School is a recipient, recipient of the 2013 National Blue Ribbon Award. Swamaco Elementary's election is in recognition of its ability to maintain high achievement standards over the past five years. Swamaco Elementary is, schools is among the top 15% for our performance levels on the state's reading and mathematics assessments, and is considered within the exemplary, high-performing school category. It was among five Wisconsin public schools nominated by State Superintendent Tony Evers. The congratulation goes out to Swamaco Elementary Principal Ryan Wellnitz and his staff. Very proud in my district that they achieved this award, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Announcements? Yes, Supervisor Campbell and Vice Chairman Lund, if you could cancel your, on the keypad, please, thank you. Just a little more housekeeping before we get to our presentation. Any late communications of supervisors? Any late communications? Seeing no lights or lit, we will, we have no appointments this evening, thus we'll go to the presentation. Update from the Brown County Drug Task Force.
Thank you Chairman Moynihan, and thank you County Board Supervisors for the opportunity to give you an update, our annual update for the Drug Task Force, for our activities for 2013. I'm very pleased to be the representative tonight on behalf of the Chiefs of Police. I think I can speak for them, saying that we're very pleased with the results that we've had from our Drug Task Force, for the efforts of the, the investigators. Not only do they investigate the drugs, they worked on our ICAC investigations, they worked in a lot of different areas that we have when it comes down to undercover work, whether it's working with the community police officers, or whether it's working with other investigative efforts. So, I'm very pleased this evening to have Lieutenant David Potite and David Wesley here. They're gonna give a presentation, but most importantly, they're gonna open it up for questions of individual supervisors, if you have any. So, thank you for the opportunity.
Very good. Thank you Sheriff. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening. Thank you. I don't know if we're able to.
All set?
Okay.
There we are.
All right. First thing we do, our mission basically is to identify, disrupt, and dismantle drug trafficking organizations that operate in and through Brown County. We look to reduce the demand for controlled substances to public awareness, direct enforcement actions targeting drug users, drug houses, and drug driving. This is just some of the numbers to date for this year. That's the date ending September 30th of this year. Ninety-two search warrants, that's, that's a pretty robust number for us. Our K-9 is very active, 151 deployments. Look at felony charges, that means either buys or whatever charges we've documented, whether we've arrested them or not, that have been approved in this year, 673 felony charges. We've made 333 felony arrests, 478 misdemeanor charges, and 110 misdemeanor arrests. Gun seizures. Guns are obviously always a concern to us, and when we come across them. You know, we're looking at 31 so far this year. It's a little below last year. We had a major cache that we seized last year, which throws the number off a little bit, but, you know, just based off where we are, we're still seeing a slight increase. Vehicle seizures. We have 10 vehicles that we've seized so far this year. That is declining a bit. We're finding that most of the people we're coming across either have the vehicles in someone else's name, or they're worth, they're not worth very much. You know, these vehicles only represent the ones that we actually process for forfeiture. We have to determine their value, what equities in them. Once we determine that and decide to file for forfeiture, it either goes to a state or federal process, and then, again, they're, they're usually not very good quality. We certainly couldn't use them for law enforcement purposes, or for really any other purpose, without putting a lot of money into them. So we auction them off. Basically, if it's a state forfeiture, half of the value goes to the school fund, the cost of selling it, maintaining it, come out of the other half, whatever's left over goes into asset forfeiture. If it's federal, then that law allows for 70% of its value to be, go into asset forfeiture, which we'd also have to share with any other agencies that were participating in that investigation. Currency seizures. Again, this represents the money that's been seized, not necessarily forfeited. Forfeitures can take 18 months or more to come through the system, and most are done in four to eight months, though. Thirty to 50% comes off the top, either for the school fund, if it's a state forfeiture, or for the, the feds to process the seizure. The remainder is subject to equitable sharing, again, it goes into asset forfeiture. Our seizures now are pretty much in line with what it was two years ago. Last year, we obviously had a very large seizure, which kind of throws it off a bit, but that's still being processed and hasn't come through yet. Cocaine, cocaine base. If you were here four years ago and we were giving this presentation, that would be the focus of my presentation. As you can see from this graph, it's dropped dramatically. That started November 2010, and has continued to decline so far. Just as a point of reference, we receive, receive a lot of tips every year. This year, we received 25 tips that relate to cocaine. That's it. It's a very small amount. Well, I, I think a lot of it has to do with supply and availability. The price has gone up, which indicates that the supply is down. The quality of the product that is out there is less pure. So, through probably the economic slowdown, fewer things coming across the border, less things to hide it in, it becomes a little bit harder to transport those drugs across, and it's not something that's manufactured in the United States. Heroin, however, have, those seizures have increased dramatically. We've seized almost three times what we seized last year. In fact, we're only a few grams shy of seizing more than we did in the last decade combined. It's not just the seizures that are up, but our arrests are up as well. So far this year, we've made 30 arrests for possession of heroin, and 55 arrests for heroin distribution thus far this year. And that is significantly higher than what it was last year or the year before that. We are anticipating a significant number of additional arrests before this year is done. I expect that number will probably, for arrests, be closer to 75 at least. Heroin overdoses. Since January 2013, there have been five confirmed heroin overdose deaths, one heroin suicide, and there's two cases that are pending toxicology reports. This appears to be somewhat of improvement over the 12 deaths that we had last year. And the question is, if the heroin problem is growing, why are we seeing fewer deaths? And I attribute three things to that. First, we have to credit the excellent EMS services that they have in this county, and the availability of naloxone or Narcan in order to reverse those effects. Secondly, the fact that we're talking about it here, we're talking about it, the media, in schools, in our communities, the awareness that people are dying, and more importantly, that heroin just doesn't kill people, it kills dreams and opportunities. I think people are starting to realize just how much of their life that takes away. And then, third, we have been hitting heroin very hard. We've been gathering intelligence on who's moving and using heroin for a couple of years now, and we're finally getting enough to where we can actually anticipate who's involved and how they're connected. We're seeing the, the courts give out harsher sentences for heroin distribution. And I think that's, that's very key in, in the message that we're sending. Heroin prices here are much higher than they are in southeast Wisconsin. Same issue we had with crack five years or so ago. And, and so there's a definite incentive for people to come here and to sell. What we're trying to do is make sure that the cost of doing business here, in terms of seizure of cash, seizure of drugs, vehicles, as well as the consequences from incarceration and prison, are greater than the profits to be made. And we want to let them know that they will be caught, and they will face consequences. And I think some people are starting to get that message. Methamphetamine. I'll address 2010 there, since it, it spikes very high. If you remember a news report, someone bought a vacuum cleaner that was for a gift Christmas Day. It had, I believe, 840-some grams of methamphetamine inside of it. It was apparently misdirected and ended up on the store shelf. That skewed our, our numbers quite a bit that year. Now, while heroin without a doubt is the greatest that we have at the moment, we can't forget about methamphetamine. Methamphetamine is on par with heroin.
It's cleaned up.
Pardon me?
Sounds like you're really cleaned up.
So bad.
Meth is certainly on par in terms of its addiction rate. The Fox Valley is currently spending the majority of their time, as far as their drug task forces, dealing with meth cases. In addition to the drug itself, meth manufacture threatens residential environmental contamination, hazardous fumes, waste which is improperly handled and disposed of. And we have seen evidence of methamphetamine manufacture in the area, but we haven't found any active labs thus far. Ecstasy, MDMA. Again, this is a drug that seems to come and go in terms of popularity, and while MDMA is the primary drug we think about, when we're thinking about designer drugs and ecstasy, it's not the only one out there, and there's, there's a, a long list of, of different letter drugs that are out there, and it's, it's very hard to even describe them and try to narrow them down. Lately, there's, there's one out there, it's called the N-bomb, and it's, because it has, part of its chemical name is N-B-O-M-E, and this is basically an analog of a controlled substance called 2CI. It is sold in a powder form and usually called Molly's in liquid form. They sell it as LSD. It's neither of those two. It's actually a different drug, and it has different effects. And it, it has some negative side effects, seizures and some deaths and things like that that have been associated with it.
Excuse me Lieutenant, that, the spike from, for 2011, what caused that? Was that the same anomaly?
No, that, that one was a lot of MDMA investigations during that year. We seized a fair amount of the product. I think there was what we call a boat, or 3,000 pills, I believe, that was seized in Howard, if I remember correctly, as part of an investigation. So, it, you know, it's just one of those things that, it was that right time, that was the thing they were making money off at, at the moment. Marijuana. And this, we've tried to put all the marijuana-ish things on one, one graph for you, so you'll have it in plants and pounds there. This year, we had 24 plants, relatively low from what we normally see, 50 pounds of marijuana is what we see so far, and roughly two pounds of synthetic marijuana. We certainly have seen a decrease in the availability of wholesale marijuana in the area, and that is not to say there, or that is to say there are fewer pound dealers in the area than there were last year. But that's not to say that marijuana use has decreased. It just means that street prices are up slightly, people have to travel further for the marijuana, and the organizations that were distributing large quantities of marijuana have been disrupted. The demand is still there, and so the supply will return. It's, it's a matter of time. Prescription drugs.
You know, we look, we look at our, our pill problem, our prescription drugs, and you look at the snapshot here of all the pills that we seize, and we know from other communities and what we see here in Brown County, that you can't have a heroin problem without having a pill problem, because of the opiate nature, the connection from prescription drugs, and that lead that every one of the heroin dealers or users that we talk to will say that they started out on a course from prescription drugs. So that's why we focus so much on the prescription drugs. Pill seizures have spiked since we began to focus on them more in 2009, and dedicated an officer, that was the, the drug diversion investigator that we put on, addressing prescription pill problems at a larger level. You may, may have seen some of the legislation that was sponsored by Senator Nigran. We lobbied for some of that legislation and look forward to its passage and the implementation. The prescription drug monitoring program, which went into effect this year, has had a huge impact. It's difficult to quantify how successful, and for those that aren't familiar with the prescription drug monitoring program, Wisconsin was the last state in the United States. Basically, it's a database or clearinghouse for doctors and pharmacists to go there to stop people from doctor shopping, okay? They have to report every prescription to go out there. I can give you a, a simple little anecdotal example. Yesterday, I went to the doctor, because back pain issues like everybody else has. And I hadn't seen my doctor, this is just a checkup, it's nothing major. And I hadn't seen him in six months, and I walked in there, and he says, "I remember you," because when I had seen him six months ago, he knows what I do for a living. And, and it's hard for us to judge, are we being successful out there? And when he sees me, he points to me, he says, "I remember you. Every single time I read a prescription, I think of you." All right? To me, that's a win-win. And then he starts to tell me how they have been busting, his term, not mine, busting their own patients for prescription fraud, basically doctor shopping. So we know through that, my own personal experience and other experiences that we hear on the street, that this is working, it's just taking some time to get ramped up here, but it is progress. If you look at the breakdown of pills, you can see the snapshot over the six years, are narcotics, those are gonna be your oxycontin's, your Percocets, your benzodiazepines, those are anxiety drugs, insomnia drugs, seizure drugs, you know, the names that you might recognize are Valium, Xanax, Klonopin, you can see how they break down. The stimulants are gonna be your Ritalin's, and Hydrocodone, that's the number one prescribed drug in the United States, that's Vicodin. All right, that's what they wanna give you for pain. So that's why it's important to us that we monitor those and enforce those as much as we can. Some of the other things we do besides drugs, because we know in law enforcement that everything in our community is affected by drugs, the retail thefts, the armed robberies, the smash and grabs, when your vehicle gets broken into, we know that majority of the time, that's from drug users. We have robberies that we investigate, as far as the arrests, helping out with other agencies, financial crimes, child neglect. We did two ICAC, and that's Internet Crimes Against Children this year. A lot of those connections were made from drugs. You know, we kinda have an 80/20 rule in law enforcement that we talk about, 80% of the crime is usually committed by about 20% of the population. Some of the other things that we've seen this year, as far as non-drug-related arrests, a lot of these people who are coming in contact, they have warrants, bail jumping. You know, going back to my 80/20 rule, 40 of them were habitual criminal enhancer charges that we put on them, because it's the same old people, time and time again. Dave talked about our marijuana seizures and stuff. Four out of every five seizures that we have in connection to guns, 80% of the guns we take are from marijuana-related incidences. So we, we're all, "Oh, it's just marijuana, it's just pot that they're smoking." Well, when we brief an op for a marijuana deal, when we're going out buying deals, or we're looking at some of these grow operations, whether it's in somebody's backyard, or it's in somebody's 15-acre field, you know, we take that very seriously, because there's a heightened state of awareness with us, just because our own statistics tell us that there's a high probability that somebody's gonna be armed, 80% of our guns marijuana-related. Some recent changes that we've had, the Brown County Drug Task Force, about a 30% turnover this year. That's pretty much normal for an organization as far as succession planning, to cycle people. You wouldn't wanna cycle everybody out at one time, just because of the learning curve. We're a very fast-paced office. Last year, we had a 50% turnover. And the turnover is because of promotions, people cycle out. We have four- or five-year tours, depending upon what agency in the Drug Task Force, so it just, sometimes it just comes up, people are cycling out. Other things, we've been assisting investigation divisions at the Brown County Sheriff's Office, prostitution stings, people ask, "Well, why are you guys involved in that?" Because drugs drive prostitution, all right? We did the ICAC operation again. The first ICAC operation, I think it was about six or seven arrests, and the last one were eight or nine arrests. You know, when we were doing those ops, basically, what our guys did is they were in groups of four or five, our guys were the takedown teams, so we would sit around for three days waiting for some sort of connection with the Internet Crimes Against Children, and just sitting here talking to these guys. I mean, we got a young group of guys, they're passionate, and they're dedicated to their job, but just sitting here talking to them about, you know, drug enforcement versus enforcement against Internet Crimes Against Children. It's like, you know, what is more damaging to our community? They're both damaging, but just listening to our guys, they all got kids like you guys do in families, and it's like, and especially in lieu of some of the professions that some of these people that we arrested were involved with, that they have direct contact with the kids. It was just interesting to see what their, our own officers' reactions were as far as, I'm not saying they liked this, but they got a lot of satisfaction. They really, they really felt like they were helping improve in our community by making these arrests. We've seen an increased use of our K-9 team for interdiction operations. You know, we, we kinda tested the waters. We get inundated with requests from municipalities all over in Brown County, that, you know, we, we have drug complaints here, we have drug tips here. So what we've done is we've taken our K-9 and another officer and kinda had our own little interdiction. And we go out there and we partner with whatever, if it's a drug, a community police officer or directed enforcement officer, and we partner with them and say, "Okay, where are the hotspots in your neighborhood?" Okay, so we're relying upon their information, their intelligence, and we're relying upon the tips and the citizens who are calling this in, and kinda do use the, the feed a fish to a person analogy. So we're not just going out there and making the arrests for them, we're taking the officers with us physically in our cars, and we're showing them, basically, when you're seeing hand-to-hand deals in, in open-air environments, that this is your probable cause. We're teaching those guys, we're helping those guys to carry, kinda carry the load themselves. So we kinda tested the waters on that, and this is really successful, because we're getting a lot of calls for help around the county and the city. 151 K-9 deployments that we had just in the last three quarters. We're a busy office. What are we looking at for 2014? We wanna expand our Drug Task Force in this interdiction team to make it kind of a permanent, to use one of our own guys to assign to the Drug Task Force, to kinda really get more involved in this interdiction in our area. You know, we wanna target the, coordinate our interdiction, focus on citizens' tips, I talked about that. We believe that this can help better the emerging problems such as heroin. You know, part of what our mantra is, is to go one step higher on the ladder. We continue to do that, but we also wanna start now targeting the users to have more of a deterrent effect. So to target, and we think that the interdiction team is gonna be the perfect team to help do that, and again, with partnership with the local municipalities. You know, we wanna reduce the, basically doing all this, we believe that reducing the demand will make drug trafficking in Brown County less attractive, and along with that, that what we're looking at for 2014 is obviously trying to get some relief, another supervisor to help out with the busy nature of our office.
You know, one of the, the other things we're working with is the Heroin Response Initiative, and this is something that we have all the departments and all the interested parties putting their heads together, trying to find out what's the best way to, to address this issue. You know, I mean, could we go out there and just keep arresting people and keep arresting people? Yeah, I mean, we can do that, but it'd be nice if we could find out something to do with them so that they don't come back, so that, that they get the treatment and we solve the, their addiction. And the addiction for this drug is very strong. You know, one thing that we, we have been doing is talking about heroin a lot, and we're trying to take that another step further. There are two things that you're gonna be, I think, voting on later tonight. One is gonna deal with a, a video project they're working on. We've got someone who's been arrested, is actually in prison, who's agreed to give us an interview, and we're going to put that into a video, so it has a, a local flair to it. We're going to branch it out to three different versions, one designed for the general public, one that targets school-age people, and one that's designed for the doctors. Because, and if you look in the state plan for addressing this issue, it is a medical problem and needs a medical solution. It doesn't get prescribed unless the doctor signs, signs the note, so we really have to, to work at targeting that. Ultimately, our goal is to reduce demand, because if nobody wants it, nobody'll come here and sell it, problem solved. You know, it sounds that simple, I wish it worked that easy. Looking at, at a little bit of what we're doing, and drug tips, this is where people call in and say, "I think this house, it looks like short-term activity," or, you know, "I've seen drugs, I smell drugs," whatever the case may be. They call us, give us the information, they can leave their name or not, we can call them back or not, it's up to them, but we do what we can with the information. Last year, we had 565 tips for the whole year, right now, we're at 563. We're projecting five, 751 for the year, so that's a significant increase in, in the number of tips there. This year, we've also started tracking the tips that go out to the different jurisdictions, and when we get follow-up, follow-up on how they were addressed, if they were addressed. At the end of last quarter, that was 15%, which is not the number I'm looking for. We, the Drug Task Force is addressing about 20, 22, 23% of all those tips. Our closure rate right now, or I should say, at the end of last quarter, was 43%. We have closed quite a bit here in the last couple of weeks, and I know other jurisdictions have as well. So I'm thinking that number's probably up into the mid-20s, somewhere in that neighborhood by now, but that, still, we'd like to see a, a faster response of that, and that's why we're looking at having this K-9 unit and other officer working with other jurisdictions to try to address a few more of these tips, and so that we can do them in a more timely manner, so that they all get addressed, not just the ones that are, are the, the highest level, if you will. Again, when those tips come in, three drugs are mentioned more often than any others. The first, marijuana for sure. The second, prescription drugs. And the third is heroin. And that is by far more than cocaine or, or any of the other drugs that are out there. This is our staffing since 1998. In 1998, there was a reorganization of the Drug Task Force, and we had two supervisors. We had six investigators, let's see, one clerical physician, four analysts, and there was a supervisor for the analysts. Take that to where we are now, we have two supervisors, 14 investigators, an evidence technician, three clerical, and, and one analyst. So we have quite a few more people. Obviously, with more people, comes more volume. Our cases, last year, we had 410, we have 311 now. It puts us pretty much on pace for, for the same as we were last year, about 414 cases. But cases is only one unit measure, and it's really about how many people are involved in those cases. These are arrests, 616 arrests last year, we have 488 right now, that puts us on pace for 651. last year, we have 488 right now, that puts us on pace for 651. We're pretty much reaching our peak, as, I think, as far as what, what we can do, and, and what Dave and I can manage, because, I mean, some guys would like to work more, and we just have to rein them in a little bit, because, you know, we need to be able to monitor what they're doing. And again, reports that are generated. Last year was 2,625, we're at 2040 this year, projecting 2,720 for the end of the year. Again, an increase there, and I'd note that in 2008, we use a system called ACIS, it's required as part of our grant, and so, in addition to that report, it has to be entered by our clerical staff into a system, and that report that's generated has to be checked and approved. So, when we talk about 2,720 reports, it's actually twice that number that has to be reviewed. So it, it, it has picked up a bit more work in that, that regard. So I'd open it up for any questions, anybody has?
Any questions, other gentlemen? Supervisor Landry?
You had mentioned that you're getting about a 15% off rate on, on tips that are handed off to local jurisdictions, is that correct? Can you explain why? I would expect that to be a lot higher, can you explain?
And so would be, and so did the chief's. At the last meeting that we had with our Board of Directors, I think that's being addressed in, in certain areas where, where there are issues, and some of that could be that simply they're not sending us feedback, they're not saying, hey, I did address this, and, and, you know, we knocked on the door, or, you know, whatever it was that they did, or we made an arrest on it, maybe they aren't sending us that information, and so we're looking to get that push to us, just so we can track that, and, and there is probably a good degree of that going on. So, you know, I do think the number's a bit higher than what we're showing, but we would like it to be even higher. And again, I think one of the main issues there is, the officers on the road are going from call to call to call to call, and there's not a whole lot of time to say, oh, let me, let me swing by that place and see what's happening. You know, they, they have to go on to the next call and do the next report. So they don't have a lot of time for that proactive investigations. You know, areas that have community police officers or directed enforcement officers are in a better situation, in that they can be, you know, focused on some of those things a little bit more. But again, I mean, you know, a, a large number of those tips are in the city, so they have more than their share of work to, to do to address those. There are some areas out there that, that have 100% return rate on those, you know, but they only have five or six, or whatever the case may be, but, but they are addressing them, and, you know, so we kind of have to balance that.
Anyone else? Supervisor Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Great report, thank you very much. I remember thinking this last year when you brought your report, how impressive the work is. You said something that I've heard mentioned a couple of times, and, and, and I'm, these aren't the words you use, but think of it as, we can't arrest our way out of this problem. So my, my question is, do you feel like those efforts that the community is making around prevention and rehabilitation have caught up to the efforts around arrest and prosecution?
Well, no, they haven't. We definitely need to, to look at treatment, and what we can do to curb demand more. You know, and, and one of the challenges in, with the Heroin Response Initiative, there are a lot of treatment options out there, different methods, if you will, but when you look at the success rate, it's not very promising. And, and the ones that are, are generally inpatient, and they're usually six to nine months long, and that is extremely expensive. That's not something that most insurance companies would, would cover. You know, and so when you're looking at a treatment cost of $50,000, $60,000 per person, you know, it, it becomes a very difficult thing. I think what we're, and we also have to look at the sentences people are getting, and the people that need that earliest are going to be the people who are using, you know, and for possession, we don't tend to see very harsh sentences, you know, in, in terms of enough to get someone to where they can get treatment, because right now, the treatment option is, is going to be what they can pay for, what programs they can get into based on their insurance or, or means, or they're going to get it through the correctional system, which is going to be in prison, which is going to require that they be there for 18 months. And if they've already spent a year sitting in jail, and they get there and only have six months left to serve, they aren't going to get that option. You know, but does that mean we need to sentence people two years for a possession case? I don't think so. So we, we have to figure out some way that we can get those services to the people that we're housing here. Whether we're housing them, whether we have them on EMP, whatever the case is, we need to figure out a way to get the services to them.
In your plans for 2014, you, you talk about hopefully a third supervisor, so let's just sort of take that out of the equation. If you were going to invest more money in combating the issue of drugs in the community, would it make more sense to increase more spending on the enforcement side, or on the treatment and prevention side?
Well, I, I, I think, I think it makes sense on both, yes, but, yes, there, it needs to be increased there. I think, I forgot exactly how to say this, I think the, the problem is, is that Dave and I are putting in the hours for that third supervisor.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Oh, yes, okay.
That's what I'm saying.
Sure.
That seems like a worthy goal.
Okay.
But let's assume a moment that that's there.
Right.
Where would it make more sense to put it?
Your mind, money beyond that, in terms of the future?
In terms of drug enforcement, I definitely think that we have to look at treatment. You know, I, I mean, I can go and arrest more people, but we're, we're just, we're building a bigger pool of violators and offenders, we need to figure out a way to reduce that number. You know, and if, if, you know, it's very hard to quantify, how many addicts do we have out there using heroin? But if they stopped overnight, the dealers would go away. I now, I can now focus on other things, with the manpower that I have, so, and the more drugs you can address and do that with, the less people I would need for that, and we can start focusing on other types of crimes. I, I, I know the sheriff could find umpteen different things for us to be focusing on.
Well, yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone else with questions? Supervisor Clancy?
Would you explain what an analyst does in your business?
Sure. One of the gold mines, if you will, as far as drug enforcement, are cellphones. Drug dealers have cellphones, that's how they communicate, that's how they operate, they love text messages, they love to, you know, put the lock codes on, and, you know, everything they do can try to hide it and pull the SIM cards, but we have a device that allows us to extract data, including erased data, from those cellphones. And, for example, we had one of our, our key people that we arrested, involved in heroin, we downloaded his phone, the download from that phone was 5,000 pages long, alright? That's a lot of data to go through for a person. So-
Many drug dealers will have three or four phones, so now-
Yes. So if, if someone's dealing and they have phones in history, and, you know, we get all those phones, we have a very good picture as to what they're doing, and particularly when we get text messages, and who they're calling, and we can develop an organization very quickly that way. This is something that we only have, we just got this year. You know, we, we haven't had a lot of time to use it, it, it does take up a lot of time, because again, you get that much data, and I think we've already done, I don't, like 20 or 30 phones, so far. You know, that's not a lot, but we get in about, probably between 150 and 180 phones a year, that we, we take into, to evidence. So, you know, we're going to have to figure out which ones to focus with this on, and when we do this, it's, it's according to a search warrant, but it produces a lot of information, and we need someone that can sit down there and put that information together, so the investigators can understand it. You know, I mean, I, I think I'm okay with Excel spreadsheets and things like that, but you start throwing that much data, it, it really gets a bit complicated. And we have some software out there that helps us do that, but someone that is trained to do that helps a lot. And that's just one, one example, I guess, there's others, but.
Anyone else? Supervisor Zima?
On or not?
You're on.
There was one comment, I didn't quite understand it, maybe the rest didn't either, but, or maybe they did, but you had said something about that some of your guys want to go at it harder, and you have to rein them in, and I didn't quite understand why-
Well, I mean, some of that, I think part of the issue is, is when we do search warrants, when we go out and do controlled buys, where we're buying drugs from people, those are inherently dangerous situations. There are situations that can involve weapons, they certainly involve taking people's freedom, getting into their house, you know, is it exigent circumstance, things like that, those are all liability issues, you know, for the county, and, and part of our job there is to make sure that we don't cause liability for the county. And it's also a safety issue, you know, we have to, and we have some experience doing this, as you see with the rotation of officers we have, a lot of them may be experienced officers, maybe not, but they have very little drug experience, you know, when, when they start hearing information from an informant, or whatever the gathering, we may say, you know, that doesn't sound right, it sounds like they're going to rip you off and try to rob you. And if they're trying to rob you, that means there may be guns present, so we're going to have to try to control that situation a little bit. And we, we have a, an operations board of, okay, we can do this, 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 and this. We have meetings, we have grant things, that we have to do also, administrative work, review those reports, sometimes we have to testify in court for expert testimony in other cases that aren't ours, and, and we may have three or four things that people want to do at the same time, and we have to kind of say, sorry, I know you've been put off twice before, but these things take precedence, so we're going to focus on these today, that's, that's what we have time to do. That's kind of what I mean by reining in, you know, we just have to triage, or say, look, we, we've been here how many hours today, we get into that, we're going to be spending another eight hours tonight, you know, do that tomorrow, we don't need to pay overtime to do that tonight.
You had said that your report showed 151 K-9 interventions, that was successful interventions, is that, or?
No, that, that's, that's deployments, how many searches they've done, so it could be a car that stopped, the way we employ our dog, the vast majority of those-
You find something?
I would, I would say, well, ours were probably 80 to 90%, something like that.
One, there's 130 or so that the dogs found something.
Sure.
And are, are they trained to, to go after all different types of drugs, or are they trained just for one, or some dogs are trained for one, some drugs are trained for another, or?
It varies by drug. The dog that we have is extremely good, it is trained on, I think, six drugs, heroin, cocaine, crack cocaine, methamphetamine, marijuana, ecstasy. I think, I think that's it. And that, that's a large number for most dogs.
That's a very integral part of your operation then, isn't it? Have you maximized that, or?
No, and, and again, I think the way we want to maximize that is by doing more into that interdiction route, where that activity, you know, that this person and this person, or if we don't have anybody that can buy from, we don't have any good intel that's going to give us a search warrant or anything of that nature, so we're going to have to look for activity and see if we can find a violation, make a traffic stop, and while we're making that traffic stop, have the dog go around the car, the dog alerts, now we have probable cause to search that vehicle, we search the vehicle, we find marijuana in the trunk of the car, we saw him just come from that house, now we can get a search warrant, that, and that will lead us to another investigation. And it may address a tip, or whatever the case may be, that's, that's kind of how interdiction works. When we have deployed that, we have, we're batting a thousand, as far as that goes. Every day that I've sent those guys out to go and work in that, that area, interdiction, they come back with either an arrest, or someone who's going to now be working for us, which also leads to more arrests.
Also, you said you wanted to concentrate more on, on the users, could you elaborate on that a little more, or just how you'd go about that? Because I know that's something this board, I think, on a number of times, has talked about, hey, should we be identifying the users, whether it's to embarrass them, or else to, you know, force them to take treatment, or whatever? And, because the users, you say, are committing the crimes, by, by and large, the other crimes to feed their habits, is that, is that a fair statement, or?
It absolutely is, I mean, if-
I don't know, the sheriff won't eat. Better job with the drug enforcement, because the other crimes will go down also.
The latest stats from Madison, that it, it takes the average heroin addict, who's a hardcore addict, $150 to $200 a day to support his addict, or to support his dependency, $150, $200, where are they getting that money from? They're the ones that are doing the retail thefts at Walmart for the TVs, and then turn around and sell the TVs for drugs, they're the ones that, when you don't lock your car at night, they're going through your car and taking the change out, or they're smashing your car, they're the ones that are doing the home invasions, they're the ones that are sticking up to get the Shell gas stations, and stuff like that, to try to get a quick $150, just to support that habit. And, and bear in mind, they're using their prices down there, up here, it's 50 to 100% higher. So, you know, it's, it's easily $300 a day.
But you're following up only on about 20, 20 to 30% of your, of your tips, are some of those just bad tips? Or some of them aren't worthy of, of going after, or is it just you have to do triage, which ones are the best ones for us?
A combination of all. I mean, we certainly have, have some that we've identified as nuisance tips, people who have some beef with their neighbor, you know, we, we've, we've checked into it a couple of times, and they keep calling, we'll try to call them back and address the issue with them. And, and sometimes they'll just call in, and we've pretty much decided that's a nuisance file, unless there's some, something really special and different about their information, that's very specific. There, there are some that, I, I, I remember one I got a few years ago, and I, I just had to laugh, it's like, they said, there's a house on the west side of Green Bay dealing, that is dealing drugs, that was the tip.
No, that's not a good tip.
I'm like, really? You think? So, not much I can do with that one. That one, we would not even assign out, to be quite honest. So we, we do have to kind of look at the information, I mean, is it specific, can they tell us where, or who, or something that we can follow up on? If, if it has something that has no leads to it, it's not something we're going to send out. The tips that we do send out, we, we found that there's, there's at least something to it. Some report, even if we can't corroborate or substantiate it, it's important to let the officers that are patrolling that area know that we think this house is involved in drug activity, if you get a call there, if you're around there and you see something, just bear that in mind, and maybe think to look for, you know, the paraphernalia and things that are associated with drug activity, to, to investigate that avenue.
What percentage of tips that you don't pursue, do you feel if you had more manpower, for instance, that you would pursue? Is it a problem?
You know, I, I mean, it's certainly manpower, whether it's our manpower, or manpower on the road. I, I believe that most, the vast majority of those tips can be addressed by uniformed officers. We, we, we don't have informants, you know, you can't just go, hey, I'm, can I buy? That's not going to work. So undercover tech, techniques aren't necessarily going to work there either. It's going to have to be observation, and then interdicting that activity. And, you know, we talk a lot about houses, and it's not just houses, we, we know that drugs come in through certain avenues, they're coming in from Minneapolis, as far as meth goes, ecstasy, marijuana, Highway 29, 41 and 43 are going to have made corridors coming for heroin, what, a little cocaine we think is coming in, again, marijuana also, that's the route it's going to be coming through. So traffic stops that are made there are going to have some, some impact. And again, if you're going to Door County, Ocono County, Marinette, you're coming through Brown County. And so that's our opportunity to interdict those, those things as well. And then there's also parcel post, you know, things that are coming through UPS, FedEx, and US Mail, and US Mail is actually one of the, the more frequent ones than any of the others. And then, you know, we also have, you know, trains, the port, and we have storage sheds, a lot of stuff is stored out there, using other people's names and, and things of that nature. So there's, there's tons of things to look at as far as interdiction goes.
Is dogs in that, for instance, at the post offices and the UPSs and all that?
We do.
Is it just occasionally, or do we do it on a regular basis?
It is just occasionally. We, we do do, do it periodically, just to, to check that. When we've done it just randomly, we, we haven't had a lot of success there. When we've targeted it to timeframes where we think there's something coming in based off some case, we've been able to intercept packages and identify them. You know, a lot of times the, the companies that are shipping those, or the US Postal inspectors are, are good at identifying potential packages, they'll apply for a search warrant if it's the postal inspector, and then we'll do the K-9 sniff, we get an alert, then we'll be able to open a package.
Well packaged material?
Yes. And it's not, it's not the drug, it's something I would name a dog. Send a file that the dog recognized. And that, that's how we're able to do that.
I just want to make one last comment, that, you know, I've been here since the Drug Task Force started, I think you guys have just progressed magnificently. I mean, we're very provocative, I, at least I am, with the professionalism that you guys have exhibited, and the dedication that you guys have put in on this thing. And we just want to, I, I personally just want to encourage you and thank you, you know, for, for my constituents, and I think everybody here for the, the work you do on these good reports that you bring to us, we really appreciate it.
Thank you. Any questions? Supervisor Nicholson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just want to say thank you, gentlemen, for being here, giving a presentation. I have some specific questions dealing with heroin. Apparently, according to the statistics that you're showing- Apparently, according to the statistics that you're showing, heroin has a big impact on a community. Can you state where this drug is coming from? What countries?
We don't know exactly where it's all coming from. There's three different regions in the world that generally produce heroin, and there actually is a fourth that's emerging. And if there's a chemical analysis done, that can be identified. That's gonna have to be done by the federal government. The state crime lab doesn't do that type of analysis. And you have to be selected to participate in that program. They also test the purities and things of that nature. We have not been selected. I would say that we actually have a presentation that's coming up later this month by a group that's gonna show us some equipment that would allow us to do that, kind of replace our field tests. So, you know, I'm interested to see how that works for us, you know, if it would work and if it's practical or not. But I haven't seen that in practice yet.
What countries is drugs coming from? The opium?
It will do that, and it will also give you sort of a fingerprint for that drug. In other words, if it's cut in a certain percentage and you find drugs in another place that has that same percentage, you know, I mean, that's a connection. But it also lets us know how pure is the drug on the street. Is it 10% pure or is it 90% pure? And that's gonna make a big difference as well, as far as what's that telling us. But as they're coming in the area, the way that they're coming in is Milwaukee, Chicago. It's that corridor. And even Milwaukee, they're getting from Chicago. That is the source city for us.
But, so, when is this presentation? That you're gonna be president?
We are trying to set up for... The 23rd of this month.
Is it a possibility? I don't have some... Okay. No, thank you very much. Also, you're saying it's coming through Chicago and Milwaukee. Where are the entrance points into our country before it's even coming to Chicago and Milwaukee? Where are the points on the, I mean, within the United States?
They're pretty much all over the country. Certainly, you know, a lot of what we see, you know, they call Mexican brown, that typically comes across the Mexican border. You know, there's Colombian. Again, a lot of that will come there. It can come from the east coast, whether it's Florida or anywhere along there. There's a lot that comes in, like New England, from that route. And, you know, I'm sure that the drug cartels have many different ways of getting it in. It can be flown in. You know, you always hear the stories of like submarines or things like that. When you look at the value of those drugs, again, you have the mules, the people that will swallow it and hopefully it doesn't break. But, you know, they get in and they get out. And they get paid a fair sum of money to do that. Some of them are just dupes for the other people, the ones that are supposed to get caught, and the rest go through. You know, again, when there's a demand and the price is that high, you know, there's a lot that can go through there. I mean, you know, we used to talk about a kilo of cocaine and how valuable that was and, you know, that it's, you buy that for somewhere around $23,000, $24,000, and you can resell that for $100 a gram, you know, it's $100,000. It's a lot of sales, though. When you're looking at heroin, you're talking a kilo that's $80,000 wholesale. And a gram here in Green Bay is probably averaging about $350 a gram. And I've seen, you know, someone will cut it, and they're a user, so they're gonna take some for themselves, so when you buy a gram, you get, you know, .6 grams or something like that. You can easily see a super price that's closer to $5 or even $600 a gram.
Lieutenant, in your presentation, early in your presentation, that you're monitoring, you're monitoring who's moving it and how are they connected? Who is moving it and how are they connected? Can you elaborate, please?
Well, I guess, you know, there's not a specific, like, this person is doing it. It's a number of people. They're separate.
Is it organizations?
Some are organizations that we would define as having five or more people that are working together, absolutely. You know, we do target those.
Are they independent organizations?
You mean, are they like a cartel?
You tell me. I mean, is it five guys that just met on the street at a coffee shop and said, hey, let's do this? Or is it an organization that's basically professional?
You know, I don't know that they have the professionalism of, let's say, a drug cartel necessarily. They, lately, many of the ones that we have been looking at are affiliated with a particular street gang in Milwaukee, Chicago area. And, you know, so we have some focus on those. You know, again, we have, we have quite a bit out there that we're, like, you know, ready to move on some stuff. So, I mean, I don't want to get too specific to...
Tip them off.
You know, say, oh, they must be talking about me, because even if I'm not, they'll think they are, and, you know, and everyone will panic for the moment or change their routes, drop their phones, whatever the case is.
Trying to get specifics, so we have some idea. I guess I would like to know, you know, what countries is this drug is coming from? And like you said, who's moving it? Who's connected? Who's bringing it in? The points of connection? And basically, it sounds like most of these questions should be towards the federal government. But, I mean, I would think your organization would have some idea of, you know, some answers to these questions.
Yeah. The vast majority of what we're seeing is Southeast Asian heroin. And, you know, the routes that's coming in are varied. Different groups have different routes. They establish patterns. You know, as you said, in order to, you know, to stop the flow, it needs to stop at the borders, you know, the points of entry. If we could lock that down, then, you know, it wouldn't get here. You'd have to have opium fields growing locally in order to cultivate and make heroin.
History from the 80s, I remember during the 80s, America basically took the game to certain countries where they were growing the dope of various drugs. You know, and I believe that was a successful operation. Do you know if we're still, if America is still doing this with the DEA, the marshals, cooperation with different countries? Do you, have you heard anything through some of the federal agents? Is that still going on?
Yes, they do have eradication operations. They, I know some of the DEA agents here actually went to work on those for periods of time in Afghanistan, where we're, you know, trying to convince the farmers to grow something other than poppies. You know, the profit there is pretty good for growing poppies because of the demand primarily here and also in Europe. But, you know, one of the problems there is they will not allow aerial spraying. Any eradication has to be done by hand. Takes a long time to harvest poppies.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Anyone else? Supervisor Buckley?
One thing I didn't see in your presentation at all. Are you seeing much or any more frequency in working with the fraud investigators, whether you're in the housing situation or EBT program?
What we have done is we have basically automated somewhat our, well, as best we can, our D referral process. So when we're making arrests, we have a sheet that we use, and we copy that sheet to our fraud investigators, so then they're able to look at the addresses and the people and determine if they have something going on there. We do get, we do talk back and forth with the investigators in the housing area. You know, they'll ask us questions about people, and sometimes we'll call and say, you know, we're looking for this person, any idea where they may be, that type of stuff. We are working to try to get direct access to their system. I think that should be coming through our ID department relatively soon, or TS department now, I guess, relatively soon. So, you know, those things are in the work, you know, that will be a resource for us, you know, both in terms of identifying people who are receiving benefits and selling drugs or whatever the case may be, and also locating people that we're looking for.
That's it? Anyone else? Please raise your hand. Supervisor Katers?
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you both for all that you do. You guys are a blessing to our community. I wanted to ask, is, what are the drugs of choice in schools nowadays? At what levels of school? You know, is it progressing? What are the things that you're doing to curb interest in our young children as they move into schools?
One of the things we're trying to avoid is our... Marijuana, I think, is still one of the most popular drugs, but what we know about marijuana is marijuana is the gateway drug to harder drugs. Cocaine is specifically heroin, and it's the gateway drug to bad behavior, criminal behavior. Do a number of presentations. I think we network most with the officers and the SROs throughout the county. Collaboration and sharing of our presentations and our information. I mean, I can't give you the number of presentations that we do, but we're never turning down a presentation. We're always jumping at that chance, because as Dave was saying, we can continue to arrest people, and we're very, very good at arresting people. But the prevention and the treatment thing is where we really need to start. Yeah, yeah, you know, that's a good point that Dave brings up. You know, we are seeing it in the grade schools, but we're also seeing the onset of prescription drugs, because if you just think right now, what prescription drugs do you have in your house right now? Like, you know, I'd be the first one to raise my hand. I have three little kids, but, you know, I have prescription drugs, and that's where, because it's so readily accessible. You know, where you'd have to go out as a kid, an eighth grader, a high school kid, to come up and try to buy somebody or know somebody that can sell them some marijuana. But where can you get drugs readily that it's approved by the FDA, literally? And it's in your own home, because, you know, part of that education and the presentations we do, our two parents and community leaders, as far as locking up a disposal and our pill takeback program, you know, we're very involved in the pill takeback program, just for that reason, to keep the pills, to keep the drugs out of the hands of our...
Anyone else? Anyone else? Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you and the task force for all you do. Folks that have had to ask questions, could you please cancel on your keypads, please? And Supervisor Robinson? Supervisor Robinson?
I'll have to yell about it.
There you go. Thank you. Okay. Let's do this. Bless you. And we will move on to reports. 7A, report from the county executive. Mr. Executive, good evening.
Good evening. As you guys know, the budgets are underway. We had our first budget hearing with the public safety. It was an encouraging meeting. I hope to see the same level of discussion and oversight with the budget there that had taken place, along with the other committees that are coming forward. I think what that, what we saw there was that in the conversations leading up to the budget, there's been a lot of collaboration in discussion of the overall budget strategy. And on an overview, you know, as far as a broad-based look at what the budget accomplishes, we essentially are lowering our levy, we are reducing our tax rate, and we are reducing debt. And I think that's all something that we can be proud of. Some of the things that are taking place right now, and I just want to give you a few updates. The CTC redesign is well underway. The hospital has begun operating with the capacity of 16 beds. What this does is allow the county to bill for eligible clients Medicaid, and that allows us to bring in an additional $550 per day for those clients. In the long run, this is a great strategy, and quite frankly, we have to commend the board for allowing us to do the redesign and to bring this strategy. It's two years in the making, and we're finally seeing it come to full fruition. We are monitoring a number of bills that are happening at the state. As you've probably seen in the newspaper or in the media, that there are a number of bills that the state is passing. We are particularly watching Assembly Bill 387, which is called the Second Chance Bill. While in the concept of the bill is something that we, from Brown County, agree with, the funding of it would be something that the county is not in favor of a current drafting of the proposed bill. It would be essentially another unfunded mandate to the counties, and we are requesting that the state provide the funding towards that bill. Additionally to that bill, we are, other bills that we're following is the County Fraud Bill, Assembly Bill 232, the Library Bill, AB 288, the Raising Bill, which is Assembly Bill 415. And continuing to work with the discussions from Representative Voss and his Special Task Force on Mental Health, supposedly there's gonna be an additional $750,000 available to counties. And in addition to the TAG grants that the Criminal Justice Coordinating Board is working on, there's gonna be an additional $750,000 available for counties to apply for. And this starts to look at the treatment alternatives and diversion for mental health and drug and alcohol abuse addictions. Some positive news that the recently announced, WIDA announced that Cardinal Management will be awarded the $350,000 for the Veterans Housing Project over at the county farm. I know that you're all aware of this. This is a very positive move. It allows the county to, for the sale of the eight acres of land, but it also allows for the county to continue to look at that 238 acres that the county owns, and we're looking at a positive project with the research business in Tech Park. With that, the demolition of the old mental health center continues to be on schedule and on budget. They are anticipating to be taking down the exterior walls in December. So this will be another one of those projects that we've begun. And when I first came into office, it was one of the requests from the Executive Committee to continue to monitor and come up with some type of conclusion to that debate. And I think by December, we'll be hopefully seeing the last of that mental health center's existence. Lastly, I just wanted to note that the Costco grand opening is taking place tomorrow. I think from the, I want to commend the county board, Public Works, specifically the Highway Division, the Sheriff's Office for partnering up with the Village of Bellevue and the related parties for making this project come to fruition. Specifically, the county had to accelerate their schedule for highway projects, both in design and construction. This is a project that began in May and just completed here in October, or this last Friday, on October 11th. I think there's a lot of compliments to the Public Works Department for getting that project done and, at the same time, allowing traffic to continue to flow through. So I think this was a positive showcase where Brown County can rise to the level to help a municipality bring in economic development for the community. So I just wanted to recognize Brown County's staff and employees for getting a job done. And tomorrow, they'll be opening up, so I think that's very positive. With that, have a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Executive. And all I have to report is, as the executive had mentioned, the standing committee budget meetings have commenced. I encourage all supervisors to attend those standing committee meetings. Perhaps it would expedite things on Wednesday, November 6, 9 a.m. is our budget meeting. And just as a reminder, if we need to go to a second session, it'll be the following evening at 6 p.m. here in these chambers. If you have any questions, fiscal questions, numbers, what have you, don't hesitate on contacting Dan Process. He's there to help you. So with that, we'll move on to Resolution 10K. I have a motion to approve by Supervisor Vanderly, seconded by Supervisor Evans of 10K, the ordinance amending Section 3842AII of the Brown County Code entitled Public Health Nuisance. Under discussion. Any discussion? Supervisor Zima?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Was that put on our desk here? Is that it?
This is the Brown County Health Department shall issue a citation when the Health Department receives and verifies, two verifiable complaints, whereas at the moment, it's three.
I had questions about whether it was properly posted for this meeting here. This was just, I know I...
Those sent out.
I got advised of it through an email yesterday, although I, for some reason, had trouble opening up the actual resolution. But it might just be a computer problem, but does this meet our...
Absolutely.
Absolutely. This is a byproduct of the Human Services Committee meeting. It was an oversight that didn't go out Friday in the mailing. It had been sent out under the 24-hour rule that we have, which is also under state statute.
What do you mean by an oversight? When was it written?
This is a byproduct of the Human Services Committee meeting, which the committee passed.
The Human Services Committee meeting voted on this?
Correct.
And the vote was what?
To change.
Two to two or something?
Three to two?
Three to two, okay.
What's before you is, this has been the practice for the 13 years I've been on this board, if something wasn't provided to us in a timely fashion for our packets.
Well, I tell you, I don't, to me, it doesn't make any difference whether it's three or two. You have to try to solve whatever the problem is out there. I mean, there's a lot of people complaining about it, but it, there's something a little strange when there's so many people have a complaint about it, but there's, we have to reduce the complaints from three to two to be able to process it? I mean, there's something wrong with that picture. And I've asked some questions about it to various people, including the chairman of the Human Services Committee, and spoke to some folks from the Board of Health also, and you know, they relate that, well, it seems to be a problem for verifications right within our own department. And they give me an example of when a call might come in about a bad odor, and by the time the person who is going to investigate it, maybe they get out there a half hour or 45 minutes or an hour later, at the location where they want it, if there's a shift of wind at all, he might, that person who's investigating might not smell anything at that point in time, although they can maybe drive a half a mile away and they can pick up the scent. But then they say, well, that's not verifiable because it wasn't at that address. Now, if that is actually happening, I find this like so absurd, I can't believe it. And if we need to change something in our ordinance that says that a verifiable complaint will be from the address of a radius of, I mean, I don't know what the right space is, a quarter mile, a half mile, mile, that that becomes a verifiable complaint. I mean, I mean, it's like, what did that Pogo says? We've identified the enemy and it's us? So I mean, here we supposedly have massive people complaining about this, and now we're sitting here changing an ordinance? Now, you do know, folks, that how we approached this problem was to try to treat it as a nuisance because they didn't seem to be any other way. Now, for something to be a public nuisance, it has to be really a lot of people, not just one or two people complaining, for it to be a public nuisance. I think you run some danger when you suddenly start saying it's two, or why not just one then? I mean, I think three is very small. If you want it to be a public nuisance, then want it prosecutable. I think you've got a, I don't know that, I think this is a thing out of desperation, out of the people who are dissatisfied with what's been going on, that they haven't seen as much improvement as they'd like to see regarding the processing plant out on the west side. I know most of us here aren't going to be in the path of smelling it, but I do know that we had a similar situation near my district with the Grand Tech operation, and they put a higher stack in, and that solved 99.9% of the problems. Only when you had a very rare inverse weather system or something, something might drift back in it. And I think maybe they did that there. I think you got to start trying to finding ways to solve the problem, other than, I mean, this is like, like kind of running around in a little circle here. Oh, we got to find three, we can't get three verifiable, so let's make it two. One, we know that there's hundreds and hundreds of people that are affected. So I think if, you know, going after this on a nuisance basis was really an act of desperation on the part of our county board at that time, because we were trying to address it, and we couldn't seem to address it through other standards, you know, odor capturing devices that could get verifiable complaints. But our, I know our department has gone and shut down a plant, I, maybe Mr. Nicholson can speak to it, but I remember they went in and there was a disgusting situation, and they shut down the plant for a little while, and we got some results. I think they put a bigger stack, too. I mean, the idea is that, you know, you put it up higher, it disperses more, and it doesn't bother people. I understand, I'm not sure, I've just been told that I think there was an increased size of the stack, but obviously, it's not enough. I heard that the problem, it just shifts it over to Howard more than other places. So I don't know, I mean, what's, I mean, can somebody give me an idea why this is? I, I don't know that this is prosecutable, because does it become a public nuisance when only two people have made complaints? Or heaven forbid if we put it to one? Oh, I wouldn't waste my time with that. I've already heard what Corporation Council has said, and I, but I mean, it's, are we prepared to prosecute these things based on this ordinance? Is this what's going to get us the results? This isn't going to get us the result. You might get them a few more fines, but I, you know, I think the plant has spent a fair amount of money. Now, maybe they need to spend more. I'm all for solving the problem. They got to do whatever's necessary to solve the problem. I don't know if they've got more volume than they used to, I don't know what the problem is, but I'm sure it's solvable. But it's not solvable by us just, oh, we're going to run into court? And what's the maximum fine for something like this? 500 bucks or something?
In the general?
I mean, it's like a joke, fellas. If they paid the fine every single day, it would be cheaper than what they're spending in trying to solve the problem. I did get one call from, I think, some attorney representing them, and I know, he led me to believe, and I don't know if it's true, I think the committee should verify it or whatever, he said that they've spent $1.8 million or something like that on trying to solve the problem. Well, that's a lot of money. I would think that should have solved it for that kind of money, but maybe it takes more. But, what's this? This is feel-good, this is like, oh, ah, well, we can at least tell constituents that are bothered that we're doing something. We're doing nothing with this, absolutely nothing. It's a waste of time. It's spinning our wheels. Now, I really feel for it, but I really think that we got to get to the bottom of solving the problem and with our department. Again, if our department is having trouble getting three confirmed verifiable complaints, there's something wrong. And of course, if they're saying that, well, when we go to the spot that called, well, we smelled it other places but not there, well, I mean, that is really lame. That's about as lame as it can get. Now, maybe a couple of my colleagues are pulling my leg on that. I don't know, I'm just speaking by what folks have told me. So I don't know. Do you have some insight on it, Mr. Chairman, of what is expected to be accomplished with this?
Other than what's written before you?
I think three is almost meaningless, and I guess it doesn't matter two or three, what's, I mean, what's the difference? We can pass this, I guess.
Within an eight-hour period.
I can go along with it if everybody thinks I'm a hero because I've done it, but I tell you, this isn't going to solve the problem. Oh, it'll make, they can get a few more fines out of them? Fines isn't what we want, we want the problem solved. And I think there are solutions to it. It's just, somebody's got to dig into it. I had heard that, what, the Chamber of Commerce was supposed to be working with them, and they come up with something that was similar to this. I mean, it's pretty lame. This isn't solving the problem. None of it is. Again, I don't know if I should ask to send it back, and, you know, hey, let's get down to brass tacks of what really needs to be done. Can we prosecute this under some kind of law that can shut down an operation that is causing this kind of odor? I mean, we don't really want to put people out of business. I mean, they do take animal waste from our slaughtering plants and everything else, they're providing a certain service to the community, but they're not doing it responsibly right now, so.
Supervisor Zima, but if I may, there's no entity noted here. This is a generalization of the three to two for any order complaint. I understand who you're speaking of.
Well, I mean, this could apply to
Everyone.
The slaughterhouses, too, or whatever.
Right.
I mean, we had a problem with a canning factory sometime ago, I think, in Mr. Fuel's district, but that had just some awful odor connected with it. But attacking this on a nuisance basis with a minute, did somebody say it's only a hundred-dollar fine? 500? I mean, it's a maximum or something like that? I think you got to, maybe, you know, just us talking about it, and if it gets into the paper, well, maybe the company has more interest in trying to solve the problem, whatever we can bring attention to it, I guess is good, but I guess I'd like some committee to take up and get some professional help. If our staff really doesn't, our Department of Health doesn't know how to deal with it, and our legal staff really doesn't have experience in this area, then we should go out and find some expertise to get to the bottom of this. This is, I mean, these problems are solved in other areas, I'm assuming. We don't have to reinvent the wheel, because I mean, I tell you, you talk about spinning in a very small sphere, that's what this is. I mean, we don't stop power heroin traffic by giving them traffic tickets. And that's sort of what this is. It's probably a slightly exaggerated comparison, but it's really analogical. I mean, what the heck? It's not really addressing the problem. It's just being, we're just being a nuisance to them because they're a nuisance to us. This is kind of a real feeble tit-for-tat. It's not getting at the guts of the problem. So I'd like, Mr. Chairman, you to appoint some committee or something to really dig into this, and let's get what help we need to try to solve the problem. So Mr. Evans and a few of the other folks from the west side that represent the west side areas don't have to keep coming here and grinding their teeth and trying to come up with something that, so it looks like they're doing something for their constituents. Let's really do something that solves the problem for our community, doesn't destroy our industry or anything like that, but gets the job done. I mean, that's really what has to be done. Frank conversation's got to be had like that. Maybe we need a committee with yourself, Mr. Chairman, and a couple others to meet with the folks there, and maybe we should, you know, get some research on just what can we do? What have other areas done? I'm sure they're not all dealing with it on a $500 nuisance ordinance. This is a much bigger problem than that. So, thank you.
Supervisor Seber.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've not pressed my button yet.
You're next, it says next. Supervisor Zima, would you hit your yellow button, please, to clear?
I got to save my turn for later, please don't count, this is my turn.
Supervisor Landwear.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My understanding is that overall, the situation has improved, that the investment that the company in question has made has made steps forward. At times, I understand when there's power outages or other equipment failures, that it has caused, you know, the equipment is reliant on that. So with that in mind, and with this current ordinance that is being put forward and has a motion to approve, I would like to amend the ordinance to include the language that the Green Bay Chamber had originally proposed for the exception, and I would like that exception to read, violation, exceptions, violation of the odorous air containment standard may not be subject to penalty if any of the following circumstances exist. A Brown County business which is experiencing or has experienced a mechanical, electrical, or other system failure, and the county health department is notified within 12-hour period of such failure, providing the offender submits the following to the health department. One, documentation outlining the nature of the failure, and two, the timeframe by which the failure will be fixed. I feel that this is only a common sense way of trying to work with those that have made a substantial investment to help alleviate the problem and work with the surrounding area. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I have a motion made by Supervisor Landwear to amend, the second by Supervisor Buckley. On the amendment, Supervisor Landwear, would you please clear your yellow button? Supervisor Robinson on the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of things, right now, I want to speak to the amendment, but specifically about communication around this. My understanding is that it was not clear to one of the companies affected by this ordinance, that this was going to be discussed tonight based on the agenda as it was originally crafted. And I understand these things happen, and I also honestly believe that it's okay for us to deal with this tonight because it was on the agenda as far as the Human Services report, but, and I've said this before, I think handling business this way by items in the report is a lousy way of doing it. We need to have resolutions and specific issues brought out and not depend on the reports of committees for taking up issues. It just leads to confusion. I know that some of the members of this body are confused about this, and if we're confused, and we deal with it every month, it just, it just makes it that much worse for the public. So I realize it's a little bit of a side note, but I really think we need to reexamine how we bring issues forward and not depend on committee reports for that. Having said that
Or not.
I know in this case, but I'm just saying that there are other instances where that's the case. If we, we're bringing this forward to tonight because it was in that report, I mean, that's the reason that was given to the company.
Yes, this is a byproduct of that motion, which was approved by the committee.
I know, I understand that, but I'm just saying, if we're depending on those reports to address specific issues, I think that's a mistake. I think it's not clear to the public, it's not even always clear to us. Having said that, in terms of communication, I understand that there's a couple people here tonight that want to speak to this in the public, and so I'd make a motion to open the floor.
I have a motion to suspend the rules for the interested parties to speak, seconded by Supervisor Hamir. On the motion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. We under suspended rules. If anyone would like to speak to the amendment and the ordinance change, please state your name and address for the record, please.
John Hager with the law firm of Hager, Dwyk, and Zingler, having represented the company for about 26 and a half years. Mr. Chairman, Board of Supervisors, I welcome the opportunity to speak to this issue of the agenda item. We're dealing with a situation with the Brown County ordinances, which were drafted by Brown County. We as constituents are, all we have to do is to deal with those. We didn't draft them, all we have to do is comply with them. We have to keep in mind that the entire purpose of the notice provisions is to give us the opportunity to be heard. As of 9:00 yesterday morning, it was my understanding, based on a discussion that our client had with, the client, by the way, is Santa Max. For you folks that don't want to say it, Santa Max is the person that, the company that this is all designed for, as we all know in the room, but be that as it may, but the company, as of 9:00 yesterday morning, was told by one of the supervisors, rightly or wrongly, whatever it was, the fact that it was not going to be voted on today. As a matter of fact, I then had a conversation at about 9:30 with another one of the supervisors, and at that point, didn't know, was not aware of the fact that this item had just been added at 9:45. So ironically, at the time I was having the discussion, when it wasn't on the original agenda, at 9:45, lo and behold, it shows up. I didn't see that, by the way, till about 11:30. The section that deals with this in the Brown County ordinance that is abundantly clear, the section that's in there, to take the interpretation that's taken here would be to emasculate the rest of the section, to take the position that 24 hours is all you need, because clearly it says at 2.134, paren B, it clearly says the first agenda goes out eight days at 4:00, the Tuesday of the week before, it's spelled out very clearly there. It then talks in terms of agenda additions under sub C and sub D, and it talks about that agenda additions may, must be accompanied by an explanation of the appropriate category. The categories deal with things like health issues, welfare issues, working conditions, litigation, all that crazy stuff. So none of those apply, and by the way, none of those were specified. To take a position that additional agenda items can be added in contravention of that section just doesn't make any sense. As a matter of fact, we would posture the fact that due to oversight or whatever, if the position was, we can lift it from the report and still deal with it, and I agree with Supervisor Robinson, that's just not, it's pretty with Supervisor Robinson, that's just not a- it's a pretty shoddy way to do business if the idea is to give us notice so we have a chance to be heard, so that we have the opportunity to do yesterday, so that we have an opportunity to do Friday, so that we have an opportunity to do over the weekend what we were doing today, which was contacting supervisors. All right? The fact is that the- it was added to the section that's specifically designed to deal with those issues at nine forty-five the day before, quite frankly, is deplorable. And to expect us to come today and have to deal with that based on what- we didn't write this stuff. Surprisingly, the fact that lawyers wrote it, usually you got lawyers coming in arguing about the fact that there's two ways to interpret it. There's only one way to interpret this exactly, because if we're going to say that it doesn't matter, forget about that eight-day thing, it's only the twenty-four-hour thing, then you don't need sub B and you don't need sub C. And if you can just lift it from the committee reports, you don't need it anyway. So the whole point is, I'm here gonna- Don Johnson's gonna talk about the particular situation and our efforts to work very hard in a collaborative effort with this- with the county. But the fact is, we've objected, and we're going to continue to object to the fact that we're even having the vote or the consideration of the vote this evening because we shouldn't. The fact is, you guys sent out the agenda, whether it's an oversight or whatever, it's by design, doesn't matter. The fact is, the idea of the agenda is to give us notice so that we can react and have the discussions that we're entitled to have. We're not trying to run away from the problem, by the way. That's not the deal at all. We've dealt with this front up for about a year and a half, and we've dealt with it on a professional basis. We'll continue to do that. None of this affects that. The fact is, if we're going to play by your rules, you have to abide by your rules, and we have to have a level playing field. So I'm going to reiterate the fact that we object vehemently and vigorously, and will continue to, the fact that we're even having this discussion tonight. Because quite frankly, if it wasn't necessary, then I'm pretty sure it would not have been added at nine forty-five yesterday morning.
It would have been added last Friday, but it was an oversight that it was not with our mailing.
But the fact is, Mr. Chairman, it was not. The fact is, it was not. What are we supposed to do? If we're not going to follow your rules that you drafted, you being the county drafted, how fair is that? And again, the whole purpose of the rule is to give us an opportunity to be heard. And quite frankly, the scrambling that we had to do since we heard that we were going to vote on it, well, we did what we had to do, but we shouldn't have been in a position where we had to do that all last minute. But that's what I want to talk about, and it's my pleasure to introduce Don Johnson, who is the general- I would entertain any questions. If you have any questions about what I said, I'm happy to entertain those questions.
Ms. Hooker?
Yes, I received a phone call-
Could you move your microphone?
Yesterday, this issue was brought to my attention of the inclusion of the ordinance on the agenda and looking into our code of ordinances, which does have a sentence that is set forth in two point thirteen, sub D, that says- sub four, sub D, that says, "Agenda items of every meeting of a governmental body shall be given at least twenty-four hours prior to the commencement of such meeting." The fact that Attorney Hager is reading it to only apply to subsection four C is an interpretation one way. There's the other interpretation, which is the past practice that has always occurred here on- in the Brown County Board, as far as I'm aware. We also have provision two thirteen, sub four, sub B, that says, "The county board staff shall draft properly notice and mail all agendas and packets as prescribed by chapters nineteen and fifty-nine." Chapter nineteen, point eighty-four, requires twenty-four hour notice when items are put on an agenda. So as far as the twenty-four hour requirements, those were met when the addition was included on the agenda yesterday at whatever time it went to the board office, which I'm not exactly sure of.
Before you do, I would also state, Human Services Committee met September twenty-fifth, and the motion made by Supervisor Hopps, seconded by Supervisor Hayes, to amend the order ordinance, paragraph four to a double I, that the Brown County Health Department shall issue a citation for two verifiable complaints instead of three. That was approved three to two. That was- thus, that was the instruction to provide this. If this would have been in our packet on Friday, we wouldn't even be having the discussion now. This party just doesn't like the twenty-four hour notice aspect of it. This is no different than the special executive committee meeting of this evening. We had that because it was from public safety. It didn't go to executive committee. That's why we had to have the special meeting this evening. It's the same thing, folks. Go ahead, sir.
It's nothing to do with whether we like it or not. It has everything to do with exactly what the code section says. And to the Corp Counsel's comment, as far as the statute, as she well knows, this ordinance is just a statute- ordinance that's adopted under the statute. To quote the statute as having the twenty-four hours, certainly disingenuous at best in terms of- that's what the statute says. The ordinance says what it says. This idea, and I'll take objection to the fact that we can't read a statute or an ordinance in this case by taking one sentence and deciding that's what it is that's going to rule the day. The point of fact is, if you read it as you've read it, then just take out B and C. If you read C, it says, "All agenda addition request must be accompanied by an explanation of the appropriate category specified above." Then it goes on to your sentence that says, "Agenda items of every meeting of a governmental body shall be given at least twenty-four hours prior to the commencement of such a meeting." If it didn't matter that you needed to have the explanation of the appropriate category, which goes back to the health issues and the working condition issues and litigation stuff, set forth clearly in sub C, then it wouldn't make any sense. To say that, it's frankly a little embarrassing that you'd grab just one sentence and rely on that. Because the point is, this is what it says. This is the game- these are the rules of the game. All we're trying to do is play by your rules. And if we have to play by your rules, then you need to play by your rules too. And, Mr. Chairman, I understand what happened on the twenty-fifth. We're not talking about lifting it from the Human Services Committee report. I mean, if that's the way you want to do business, as Supervisor Robinson said, that's fine. But you can't start and mix and match here. If you're going to do it based on lifting it from the Human Services Committee report, that's entirely up to you.
Anyone else from the public like to speak? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Don Johnson. I'm the general manager of Santamax, address twenty ninety-nine Shawno Avenue. I don't know how much you know about Santamax. We currently employ two hundred and ten people, have been in this community for over a hundred and thirty years. Our business is the recycling business. We currently recycle eight hundred and fifty million pounds a year that would otherwise go to landfill. So that you understand the magnitude of eight hundred and fifty million pounds a year, if you stack this in semi-trailers and put them nose to tail, that would go from Green Bay, Wisconsin to Orlando, Florida. That's what we divert from landfill each and every year to recycle into reusable products. Recently, the Green Bay Chamber of Commerce did an economic analysis of our business. We contribute one hundred and twenty million dollars of economic benefit to our community annually, each and every year. We're very concerned about this change to the ordinance. We've been working with the Human Services Committee for slightly over a year, discussing our odor issues. In the past year, two years, we've made dramatic investments in terms of human capital and time and capital dollars. What are the results of this been? We've had a sixty-one percent reduction in our odor profile, comparing last October's results to this past July's results. And those results are even slightly misleading to the low side because July is a very hot month, and it's the hardest time for us to control our odors. In addition to this, if you look at the health department's data, when we have had verified odor complaints, the radius of our odor complaints has decreased fifty percent year over year. The health department also analyzes the intensity of odor complaints. They have decreased fifty percent year over year. In July, the Human Services Committee asked the Green Bay Chamber of Commerce to assist in recrafting the ordinance, and the Green Bay Chamber of Commerce did an excellent job in balancing all stakeholders at that point in time. Unfortunately, at the July meeting, the Human Services- or the Green Bay Chamber of Commerce revised ordinance didn't even come up for vote. It was very unfortunate. Couple things associated with this is that we partnered with this. We felt that the existing ordinance as written was sufficient. However, in the means of partnering, we participated in this. In particular, one clause that was in there that was very meaningful and important to us was a mechanical breakdown and loss of power exclusion. Couple things, we implemented new technology near the end of June. This has had a dramatic improvement on our odor profile since that point in time. When we have really had odor-related issues since that point in time, they've been the result of power outages or mechanical failures. We've made dramatic improvements. We are committed to this community and to continuing to improve our odor profile, and we are committed to do that. But what I would ask this governing board to consider is to meet us halfway, and that is to add back the mechanical breakdown exclusion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public that would like to speak to the matter? Please step forward. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Tom Sladek. I live at twenty-six thirty-four Sequoia Lane in Green Bay, and I serve as a twelfth district alderman for the West Side of Green Bay. I represent that part of the city that lies, for the most part, west of Packerland Drive. I'd like to preface, first of all, I'm not going to speak to the procedural issue that the attorney spoke to, and I hope this matter's going to be dealt with tonight so that what I do have to say matters, but I'll come back next month or whatever if that's what you all decide. Yeah, I want to preface my remarks by handing out some information, if I might-
Sure. Thank you.
What I've put before you is some information that I pulled together from data that came from the Brown County Health Department. So if anybody's interested in the core information, this is the raw data, these are the spreadsheets that the Brown County Health Department keeps on records of odor complaints. And what you'll see on the graph that I've put before you is that, you know, despite the assertion you heard that there's been, you know, a sixty-one percent improvement in something called a odor profile or something, and that, you know, that there's been great progress and improvement made, you see, that hasn't been the case. This is a problem that is significantly on the rise. In two thousand eight, two thousand nine, two thousand ten, you can see there that Santamax, you know, demonstrated that they can operate at a level that doesn't provoke public outrage. But that hasn't been the case since then. This is significantly, very significantly on the rise, despite the investments that have been made, and it's provoking an outcry for the community. The people that live in my district that are contacting me, they, you know, they understand that Santamax is an asset to this community. The jobs are important, the processing they do is important. They're not out trying to penalize or trying to punish, you know, Santamax or shut them down or drive them out of town. They just want the stink to stop. You know, they don't want to have to move the kid's birthday party into the basement from the backyard because it stinks. In the spring of the year, when people are opening up their windows and letting the fresh air come through for the first time, they don't want to have to close them because it stinks. You know, they want to be able to invite people over and spend the evening on their patio and not be embarrassed because the neighborhood stinks. They just want the stink to stop. That's what they're asking for. And they're frustrated, and, you know, with respect to, you know, Supervisor Zima's comments, yeah, we understand. You know, I don't think anybody believes that if you were to pass what was proposed by the Human Services Committee, that the problem is magically going to be solved. Nobody believes that. We know that this has got to be wrestled to the mat over time, but this is a very reasonable incremental step in moving the quality of life for our people forward. For those of you that have been around a long time, and, you know, I can see that there's some that have, you'll remember in the mid nineteen seventies, you know, it really used to stink downtown. The pulp and the paper mills and the power plants, you know, there was some very powerful odors in downtown Green Bay that would make your eyes water sometimes. And I worked in one of those pulp and paper mills, and actually, I got a chance to work on the projects that corrected that. You know, in the mid-seventies, industry started to realize the game has changed. You know, you just can't offend the neighborhood anymore. And so they made the investments in human capital, they made the investments in monetary capital, you know, to put in the scrubbers and to change the operating procedures such that they didn't smell up downtown anymore. So the packing plants and the power plants and the paper mills and the pulp mills changed the way they operated. And they did it successfully. They applied the technology, but beyond the technology, they applied the resolve. Anybody who's worked in a process industry like a pulp and paper mill, if you ask them, they'll tell you. If you were to ask them the question, "Have you ever shut down or slowed down your operation because a piece of environmental equipment wasn't operating?", they'll tell you, "Sure." You know, they prioritize you. Environmental stuff is important enough, and compliance is important enough, that if you have to shut down because your scrubber pumps stopped working, you shut down. And that's commonplace. And so, you know, giving a break for a lack of reliability, you know, with all due respect, Supervisor Landwear, you know, you can see from the data that I've placed in front of you, there hasn't been- there hasn't been improvement. There hasn't been progress. It's going the other way. And I want to address this notion that somehow there should be an exception for breakdowns, and there's a number of problems with that. One, you will never know what's going on inside the bowels of that plant. Okay, this would be completely unenforceable. And you need to give your enforcement people something that's observable or measurable to deal with. That's how enforcement people work, okay? If you're monitoring speed on the highway, it's measurable. If you can't measure it, you can at least observe it. So you can observe somebody littering, and you can enforce based on observable, measurable criteria. And to tell your enforcement people that somehow now they have to, you know, determine whether this was a legitimate breakdown or not is going to hamstring them and will make this thing completely unenforceable. You're going to wade into something that will be unmanageable, and frankly, if you were to include that, I think the citizens of the West Side would be better off with the ordinance as is, rather than tightening it up from three to two, but opening up the barn door for this exception in the case of a breakdown. So if an operator fails to open the suction valve on a pump, and the pump starts up and it overheats and it seizes, well, the pump is broke down, right? So that's a breakdown. Well, it was an operational error. Well, you know, you can score that as a breakdown. You know, you'll get into endless arguments if you even get that far as the argument over what's a breakdown. There's nothing in environmental enforcement, anything like that. When I worked in the paper mill, you know, the EPA didn't say, you know, "You can pollute the air, but if you have a breakdown, we'll give you a pass." Didn't work that way. Breakdowns were part of the baseline built into the law. The DNR didn't say, "Well, if you have a breakdown, we'll forgive you polluting the river." Didn't work that way. And if you put in a provision like that, you're going to take away the incentive for this company to make the investments necessary in making those systems reliable, to do the training necessary to make sure that they're operated correctly so you don't damage equipment, to install the inline spares, which sometimes you do, so if something breaks, you can valve right over and start up another one, or to invest in the maintenance programs necessary to make sure that they know that their equipment is staying well-maintained and they can act in advance if something's about to fail. You take away that incentive and you put an entirely unenforceable aspect into your ordinance if you were to do that. So, you know, with all respect, I know this is all well-intentioned, but I think, you know, as to the amendment offer, I think that would be a grave mistake. I think it would be a huge step backwards to do that. And so I'm asking you, you know, on behalf of the people that live on the West Side that are putting up with what you see on that graph and what's happened the last three years and what's continuing to happen, to take this reasonable and incremental step forward, and it is just an incremental step, as has been pointed out. This is not- this is not going to create a dramatic difference, but it's going to be a reasonable incremental step forward in trying to curtail the severity of this problem. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from the public like to speak on the matter? Please step forward, sir. State your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Mark Steyer. My address is seventeen thirty Nancy Avenue in Green Bay, Wisconsin. I am an alderman for District Ten. That area basically goes from across the street from Fleet Farm on Taylor Street East to- to West High School and north along Gray Street all the way up to Velp Avenue. Very residential area. I've lived in the district for 23 years. And this issue has been there all 23 years that I've lived there. And it's very easy for you folks that don't live in the area to say, "Well, I smell it once in a while when I drive down 41." But to live with it on a daily basis is a little different. And I have mentioned, I went to both committee meetings. One was on my birthday. It was a good time. We'll talk about that some other time. But anyway, at those meetings, things were discussed. I have had dozens and dozens of complaints from citizens in my area that have complained about this. And I did mention that the situation seems to be improving a bit, which is great. Last year wasn't so good. The year before that was so-so. The year before that wasn't so good. So basically, it's very difficult to quantify. Some years will be worse than others. Granted, they have spent money. I've taken a tour of the plant, went through everything. I've been met with the village of Howard several times, along with Alderman Sladek. Supervisor Evans has been there, too. Citizens and supervisors from the village of Howard were there. So we've had a number of meetings over a period of time on this issue. And Alderman Sladek worked in the paper industry. He has a little better grasp on some of this than I do. I'm speaking for citizens, pure and simple, pure and simple. I think a lot of the citizens are just tired. They don't know where to go anymore. Who represents us? And that's all I'm doing, straight and simple. I'm just stating that we need to do something. And with the change in the highway on 41, there's been a whole different dynamic. Trees have been taken down, animals. I mean, we've got animals running all over our neighborhood. It's been a different animal, literally, in that area. So we're adjusting that as well. But I will just state that many of our citizens, they call, I've called at times, too. And what happens is they say, "Where are you located?" "Well, I'm on the highway. I'm getting off the highway." "Well, you have to be at an address." So you're at the address, and somebody else show up a half hour, an hour later, and then it's too late. So it is a fleeting thing. And how do you measure with odors? It's not quite as easy. We've had issues in the city. We had a huge, and I can't speak a lot on it, but the gasification plan issue, where I had entire neighborhoods galvanize to fight this. The citizens are angry. They are angry. And they write to the newspaper. They call us up constantly. And, you know, we can talk about the legalese of this and that. We can talk about going from three to two. You know, I kind of agree with Alderman, with Supervisor Zima on that fact, stating that, you know, what will that really do? 500 here, 500 there? You know, it'd be like a slap on the wrist. That might be the cost of doing business. Well, with that in mind, you know, it could be a public relations snafu for them. They don't want to do that. They want to be good neighbors. And like I said, the citizens don't want to see them go away. They just want to see it cleaned up, pure and simple. So that's really all I have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public like to speak on this matter? Anyone else? See, no one is coming forward. I'll accept the motion to return to regular order of business. I have a motion made by Supervisor Levillet to return to regular order of business, seconded by Supervisor Dantin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. We are back to regular order of business. We have an amendment on the floor from Supervisor Landwear and Vice Chairman Lund on the amendment.
Okay.
Do you still want the floor?
Let him make the point.
Very well. My apologies.
That's okay. Just, I just want to make, just want to be clear about what I said earlier. I'm not suggesting that we, as a body, I'm not taking sides on this issue. If the body decides tonight is the appropriate moment for us to deal with this, as far as notification, that kind of thing, I don't have a problem with that. My only point was that the practice of depending on committee reports for bringing issues up, I think, is the wrong practice. That's not a statement about whether we should be dealing with this tonight or not dealing with this tonight. I'm just using this as an example, because I've made this point before, that I think we need to use resolutions for things and not depend on committee reports for bringing items up. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Vice Chairman Lund.
Okay, thank you. Well, I think the aldermen from Green Bay had some good points. I think Supervisor Zima had some good points. And the thing is that we have sanitarians that go out to protect the public from restaurants that might not be doing healthy practices. But in this case, we just rely on the citizens to be, to make complaints. And when you legislate by complaint, I don't think that's always the best way of doing it. We know that there's certain weather conditions that are going to cause that smell to be all over that area, and it's going to be down on that level. And that's when it really smells. And then, I think also, saying that when their equipment's broke down, they're not responsible for the smell? Oh, okay, well, if my car is burning oil and it's making a mess, I can't tell the police officer, "Well, I'm not responsible because the car's leaking oil. I have to repair that and get back into shape." So, I mean, the people that live in that area and the businesses, the other businesses in that area, it's a real nuisance for them. I mean, when you go to a grocery store in that area, major grocery store, and it smells like death out in the parking lot, you don't really want to go there. Maybe you leave. Maybe you go to another place. So it's a problem in the area. I think Santa Max probably does want to be a good neighbor and wants to continue to do business in the area, but something needs to be done. This is a problem that's been going on for years. We've been talking about this as a board on and off for years. Let's get the problem solved. Let's work with the company to get the problem solved so the citizens don't have to continue to be calling up and saying, "Oh, it smells terrible out here today. Come on over and get a whiff of the odor profile," they call it. I mean, and also to our 24-hour notice and stuff, I mean, I think it is a good point that this should have been on the agenda when it was published, first of all. Anytime you're going to have a controversial issue, you don't want to do that on 24 hours' notice unless it's something of life and death. That's why you do things of 24-hour notice. This is not of life and death. I mean, this is a serious issue, but I think we should have proper notice on this. And we could have probably had a lot more citizens from that neighborhood come on out here, the neighborhood surrounding, and tell us what they feel about it. I mean, yeah, this is a real small crowd of people telling us what they feel about it tonight. I think it would be better to do this in another meeting and get this done properly and get good notice of the meeting and get the media to say, "Hey, this is going to be on Brown County Board's agenda. Come on out if you're worried about this."
It was written.
I'm...
But I digress.
Yeah. But I mean, there's not many people out here tonight, and I thank the aldermen for coming, and I thank the representatives for Santa Max to come out here. But I do think that we should be hearing from a lot of citizens. I know that they attend the committee meetings and they talk to Supervisor Evans, and this has been a big problem throughout the years. We need to solve it. I think Supervisors Zima going from three verifiable complaints to two, you know, it's nothing. I mean, we need to solve the problem. We don't need to solve it by $500 fines, which I don't think the big company's going to really care about that much. I think the problem needs to be solved. The odor, you know, the odor needs to be dissipated. So, thank you. I think we should refer it to the next meeting of the county board, not the one on November, December's meeting, and have a good discussion of this with a lot of people coming out to tell us what they feel about it.
That's your motion?
That's my motion.
I have a motion made by Vice Chairman Lund to refer this item to the December County Board meeting, seconded by Supervisor... Hoyer? Under discussion. We have a lot of light slip. Everyone clear, and I'll take them as we go on the referral, please. Could you punch out?
I'm punching out.
You gotta hit the yellow to clear out. Okay, here we go. Supervisor Fuel on referral to the December Board meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I guess I've kind of been a stickler for this at different times. In the county code, it says, "A special meeting of any Brown County committee or commission shall be held upon the written request of majority of the members of that committee or commission or the county board chair delivered to the county clerk specifying the time and place of the meeting, and the time shall not be less than 48 hours from the delivery of the request unless the matter to be considered is substantial legislation as herein after defined." I don't think, unless the clerk can tell us, I don't think a majority of the executive committee... I know I personally wasn't asked about the meeting, but I don't think there's a majority of, I don't think anybody turned a slip into you with names on it, did they? That's any, that is a special meeting of any Brown County committee or commission.
So what's your point, Supervisor Fuel?
Well, my point is I'm going to support referral because I think that we really don't have a legal standing. I mean, one, I think we all should have been consulted as executive committee members, and we should have had a majority of those committee members signing for a special meeting 48 hours prior to having a special meeting of the executive committee like we did tonight. I don't know that we have any legal grounds in which, if we did pass something tonight, that it'd even have legal standing. I think we'd surely put ourselves in a position, if they wanted to challenge us legally, they probably could challenge us legally and, on our own rules, teach us a lesson. So, and I've been kind of a stickler about that because I really don't like getting blindsided. So unless there was a notice there, I'm going to support referral because I think legally we've got to stand on the right foot.
Thank you. Could you hit your yellow button, please? Supervisor Dwayne on referral.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to be against referral. I think we can deal with it now. The attorney for Santa Max has been doing this for a long time. He could have came and gave a great presentation 15 minutes beforehand, knowing it within that time label. This has been going on for a long, long time. I can tell you, when I started for UPS in 1978, that was one of my first routes. And I tell you, we had a, who was the dandy then? So that's 35 years ago. It's been a consistent problem ever since. So they've had 35 years. I'm pretty sure they were there in '78 when I started, because I remember having to deliver there and pick up every night. Good people, you know, they're hard-working people. But it was a tough situation to get in and out of there every day, and some days were worse than the other, but it was part of my job. So the neighbors, the community, Santa Max, they've known for this long. I don't know how it kept going this long that nothing more's been done. And I know they put a lot of money into this, but I do know what the people are feeling out there. I'm the alderman on the far east side here, and I'm telling you, as council president, I get quite a few calls on this saying, "What can we do?" And our aldermen are out here fighting for us, but nothing's getting done. And so, you know, like I said, this has been 35 years for me when I started there. And so it's been going on for a long, long time. And, you know, I don't think people should have to live like that. So, you know, I'm against referral.
Thank you. If you could hit your yellow button, please. Supervisor Dwayne, if you could, thank you. Supervisor Hop.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to support referral. It's my motion that brought this before the county board tonight to move this from three to two. We've been dealing with this for the last year and a half. Do I want to deal with it for another two months? Absolutely not. But, and I was going to go be against referral originally until Supervisor Lund said something, which I think makes a lot of sense. And that being, if Santa Max or if the lawyer wants to argue that this was not properly noticed, so be it. We'll give that to them. We'll postpone it. But I absolutely positively challenge the citizens of the west side of Green Bay and Howard and any other area that is being affected by this to fill this gallery then, next, or in December when we bring this back. If you are serious about the problem that is before you and you don't want to make phone calls, which a lot of them do, Mr. Chairman, but you know what? You can have your voice heard in front of 26 people who will be changing an ordinance on your behalf. So I challenge the citizens of the west side of Green Bay and Howard and all the other areas to fill this gallery in December. If Santa Max wants to push it off till December, we'll do that. And then the citizens need to show up and have their voice heard here. So I tell them right now, I'll support referral, and I would suggest that all the supervisors that were going to vote in favor of this three to two also support this referral. I ask that you please support the referral and give the citizens, give them the opportunity to look these people in the face. So, Mr. Chairman, I ask that everybody support referral. And let's bring it back. We've been dealing with this for how long? Another two months isn't going to matter. The weather's getting colder and stuff. And I can go on and on and on about all the other facets of this, but we're on to referral. So, okay, fine, let's refer it.
Very good. Thank you. Please hit your yellow button. Supervisor Erickson.
Thank you, Chairman Moynihan. I, too, am going to support referral. Listening to many of my colleagues here tonight, I do agree with what they've had to say. Supervisor Zima expressed his opinion that going from three complaints to two is very insignificant. I do agree with that, too. And when this is referred, I hope you take into consideration the, I really didn't see this until this afternoon when I was checking emails and printed it off, but the moment I read it, they might as well have written Santa Max in here because I knew exactly what it was directed at. We're blanketing something under the form of an ordinance that can affect a lot of things in Brown County. I spent a lot of time on the water during the summer, and, you know, it was stated that the paper mills have cleaned up. And granted, they are many, many, many times better than when I was a younger man. And I'll tell you what, you can, wind going in the right direction, you can still get orders from the mills. You can go up to Supervisor Robinson's district and on a quick blowing wind or a hard-blowing wind, that keeps the mill order down and putting it across the neighborhoods and the business districts and so forth. We've got a lot of packing plants and so forth. This ordinance is so blanketed, it's aimed at one industry, but it's so blanketed that we could cause problems with other industries that only have occasional situations. And the way it was noted, as Mr. Robinson had said, we didn't give any of these companies or businesses an opportunity to come here and be heard. And like I say, we're too directive on one particular company to pass this and put a blanket punishment, if you want to call it, on all of Brown County because we don't have those situations throughout the county. So I think we're jumping around here a little bit. And I would request the chairman, that would be Mr. Moynihan, maybe even Mr. Lund and a couple other representatives here, health department, so forth and so on, some of the city representatives, and of course, Santa Max, and maybe even a contingent of neighbors out there to form a committee. But with the idea of Santa Max coming forward and explaining what they're doing in the very near future to address this problem. I know I've read that they've invested, I believe it's over a million and a half dollars. The hardest, or the most complaints, to my understanding, have been during this past summer when we've had the very hot and humid weather. Allegedly, there was a breakdown. Like I say, I don't know the working internals of that factory or anything, so I can't verify that it's just what I've read in the paper and in various minutes that have been reported and so forth. But like I said, I'm going to support... But like I said, I'm gonna support referral, but I think the document as it's written should be reconsidered also. Supervisor Landwear had some very good points on breakdowns and so forth and so on. So I think between Supervisors Zima, Supervisor Robinson, Supervisor Landwear's suggestions, I think we should look at this and revise this to fit everyone in Brown County, otherwise create a specific ordinance directed at somebody with their name in it, and at the same time form a committee and demand that we're going to get results. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Erickson.
Press your yellow button.
Supervisor Vanderlees.
Thank you. I reviewed my notes, looking back at emails. My district includes a part of Packerland Drive area and that region, and I had complaints going back to two thousand and six, summer of two thousand and six. So this issue has been out there for a while. I've smelt it before in that area, and it's just like a dead animal smell, like really strong, like, you know, like, you know, something's dead almost. And that, well, that's what it is. You've got dead animals and that's...but it's really strong and people...well, people are not really talking about what the smell, I mean, that's what you're dealing with, and it permeates...it permeates throughout that whole region of the west side. I think it's stronger closer to the Fleet Farm, Howard region, and closer towards, I think, One Night at Golf and Riding Club in that region, that neighborhood. So I guess from my point of view, you know, I've sat in meetings with Supervisor Evans and county officials, county Health Department, Santa Max officials, and I think they are trying to work on improving it. They have put resources in, and I think they're, you know, trying to be good neighbors. I would support referral. I think we need to get the right process in place by the Health Department, that people that are contacting or giving the complaint, that it can be verified, you know, and that it's handled properly. I'm not opposed to the exception, whatever, but I think it's gotta be tightened up a little bit, you know. You can just claim an exception every time that they think that there's gonna be a smell or that they're gonna get complaints. You can't have it that way. I think there's gotta be a way of verifying and have a little bit more tighter process there. And then, you know, I think, you know, another committee is not needed. I think the work of the Human Services, they can do that. I think this board can be committed to death, and, you know, I think we just gotta do it within...work within the committee. I think there's enough capable people there. And bring it back in December. This gives some time to try to work on it after the budget's done in mid-November and have discussion. You know, the people that are contacting me, they've contacted Health Department, that's where I directed people to, but, you know, this has been going on for years for many of those people. So, you know, has it improved? I think the answer would be yes. I'm not getting as many calls. I used to get more calls when I was in the city related to this, but, yeah, and now, I mean, I don't get the calls, but I'm sure the alderman in that area does. And then this, the other point, I mean, I think it's trying to work on, you know, solving the problem, both, you know, the company and then that the county can handle complaints in a process way, not some...you know, I think we can do better as a county for handling those, and then just make sure that if there are issues, if there are complaints, that there's a process for them to be verified and to actually follow through. So I'll support referral, and I just, I think, you know, people, you know, have not experienced it. I mean, it's very bad. I mean, people that are in...that live in that area will acknowledge they can smell it. Some people just, you know, are okay with that smell, other people will contact folks. So I just wanted to give some people some background, but I do support the efforts and support referral to clean it up. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any thought to my statement, Vice Chairman Lund?
Well, I would ask, I guess I would ask the committee chair, would you want it referred back to your committee, or do you want it just go to the county board?
I think it would be better to clean up.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Well, thank you. Yeah, I mean, since you gave me the opportunity...no, I mean, we can bring this to December. I mean, we can bring the ordinance back and forth and things like that. I am a little disappointed. I hear some of the things going on and some of the discussion, which we've had completely at the Human Services Committee. I mean, Supervisor Hop's over there ready to jump out the window, and so am I, because it's like, whoa, we should maybe start a committee up. Well, we've had this discussion. Well, maybe they should come forward and tell us what they're doing. Well, they have. I mean, they've done everything that we've all been hearing about. So, I mean, just, I mean, come on, folks. I mean, it is what it is. The real issue, of course, is, I mean, yeah, is it Santa Max? Of course it's Santa Max. Are they here? Yeah, I mean, they've got their attorney here, they've got their PR person here, they've got their GM here. Okay, so, and they don't want to, you know, I mean, I'll support the referral, but you know what? It's, I mean, what is it? I mean, I hope they fix the problem. I've been fighting this, you know, the joke is with me, and it was Alderman denies before that, and then now Alderman Stoyer, it's that, well, because it was, the only, the smell used to just kind of permeate into our district, but now that it's gone into the big-money areas of Howard and southwest Green Bay, it's been able to become more of an issue in some of the businesses. But the poor little people in my area that have been getting beat down for the last ten, twelve years, I mean, that's what it is. I mean, you call the Health Department, they've kind of straightened that out, but that's a mess, and I banged on the Health Department. Okay, they're here. Call the Health Department, see how much of a joy that is trying to get a hold of somebody. I mean, you wanna talk about a call tree, it, you know, it looks like a Christmas tree in the Griswolds. You know, I mean, you're lost in...it's disgusting. I mean, it's crazy. And so now, I mean, so then I go to church and I have the seventy-five-year-old little lady saying, "Pat, it was terrible, you know, blah, 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 wow, you're supposed to call this number," and then on the weekends or after hours, it's an eight-hundred number or eight-eight-eight. I mean, the people have been, in my district, have been beaten down. I mean, I appreciate what Supervisor Hop said, but I don't put the onus on the people in my district to show up here to complain, because that's what they've elected me to do, and that's what they've elected, you know, Alderman Stoyer to do, and we're both here. And, I mean, I guess I could probably get three hundred people here if you want, I don't know. I mean, if that's what's gonna change the board. Guys, Supervisor Zima's right, we've talked about this, you can change it three to two, you can change it to one. I don't know. I mean, the issue is, they gotta clean up the problem. They've gotta quit the noxious odor. Are they trying to do that? I think they prob...I really do think they are. I used to work with Mr. Johnson at Paper Converting. He's a good man. I like Don Johnson. He gets it, okay? He's gonna try hard. But remember, now it's a Canadian-owned company, all right, folks? And so there's a little bit more, there's a little bit more going on here. So, I mean, I think if it was up to Mr. Johnson to wave his magic wand, he'd take care of it like that. I don't have a problem with that, but I think there's other things into play here. But, you know, I mean, you know, what more do you want? I mean, it's, we don't have any power. I don't want to close Santa Max down. They're a good business. They're in a stinky business, I get that, so of course, we're gonna have some odors. But, I mean, and to say, well, they've been around for a hundred years or whatever, that's fine, but that's not what it's about anymore, folks. It's about being a good neighbor, and the business has changed. I grew up there, my parents live on Adelsman, I grew up there. And guess what? When I was a kid, we'd kind of smell it, but you know what? At that time, it was like the little pig farm odor called it. It wasn't employing two hundred and some people. It wasn't having the massive stacks, it wasn't having the huge footprint that they do. I mean, it's not the same company, folks. It's a different whole operation, so let's not kid ourselves here, all right? The only thing we have, we have very little power. There's no power we can have for Santa Max. And right, I mean, they said it at a committee meeting. They could just say, sure, we'll just pay a fine every day. I mean, it's just a cost of doing business. They could do that, so, but they're not, so, I mean, we have been working with them. But, you know, I mean, and it's been, so it's been, I mean, last August, August of two thousand and twelve, this came on. Now, I dealt with it before that, and I've worked with Anamax and Santa Max and everybody like that. So, I mean, I can wait another month or two, and of course, changing it from three to two, I don't know, what does that do? It puts more of a thorn in their side, but you know what? We don't have any other...we're basically a desperation. I mean, it's desperation. What do we do? We've been working and trying to work with them, and they say they're doing this, and they're saying they're doing that and all that stuff. We still smell the odor. Now, is it reducing? Yeah, I think it is, and I've noticed that. But, I mean, you know, Alderman Sladdick's probably right, maybe you just, you know, I mean, if we give them the pass on saying it's mechanical, I worry about that. I talked to Mr. Johnson yesterday, and I said, listen, I mean, I've been in manufacturing, I get it. I know good pieces of equipment, I know bad pieces of equipment. I don't think that Santa Max is looking to forego their maintenance schedules and forego their operations and really buy cheap pieces of equipment, but the fact is, that does open up a kind of a, you know, a pass for them to say, you know, yeah, we did have...I mean, Alderman Sladdick gave a perfect example, I'm not getting into that. The one thing I wanted to do, and I told this to Mr. Johnson, is that, and I said, yeah, I do see, we just can't have the stick. But we do get to the point, as I said, we're at desperation where we have a stick that we say, okay, we're gonna go three to two. I mean, come on, get with it. But I do understand that they are attempting to do some work, and they wanna be a good neighbor. So, yeah, maybe there is some area that we can clean up as far as what Supervisor Land were put in there. I think that's a little too broad, so, but maybe, if it gives me a couple of months, I can work with some people. I mean, I work with JBS, I work with American Foods on this issue. They're not here tonight, by the way. Just wanted to point that out. That should speak volumes, but once again, they were at committee meetings and things like that, and this has been a big issue. And I, it's, we've done all the work, folks. I mean, if you want, I mean, there is no committee, you know, this stuff, I mean, let's give...
Do you want it to go back to...
No, no, I don't want it to go back.
Just come back.
Just come back to December. Let's just do that, and, you know, we'll deal with that, then that should make everybody happy, I guess. So, and we'll take it up then, I guess, so, but, what's that? You can handle, you can put any amendments out, there's no problem with that. I mean, people can change it however they want, that's just how it is, so.
We'll do it at that time.
And we can do it at that time. And I think what Supervisor Zima mentioned about, you know, the sanitarians, maybe we should expand the radius as far as what they can look at.
And that's why I asked the question, do you want this back at committee?
No.
Clean it up with all this verbiage that you speak of and bring it back clean in December.
Oh, no, because it'll be, it'll be the same as it is here. It'll be, once again, we'll be doing committee work here, so I don't need to do it at the committee, I can bring it here, because everybody else, I mean, unless, everybody wants to come to the committee meeting, I'm fine with that, but I haven't seen most of the people there over the last year, all right? And I don't go to all the other committee meetings either, all right? But, so I understand that, but I tell you one thing, don't start lobbing out the hand grenades when you haven't been at the committee meeting and you don't know what's been transpiring at the committee meeting. That frustrates me, and that's what's been happening here. So bring it back to December, I can live with that, that's no problem. We've been messing around with this.
Thank you. Could you hit your yellow button, please? Supervisor Clancy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I sit here and listen to this going back and forth, there was an old codger out in Wrightstown would smell the pulp coming down from Kokona, and they said, doesn't that affect you? He took a whiff and he says, no, that smells like money. So what you're doing here, you're taking a plant that is employing the two hundred and some people, and I would advise you to use a velvet hammer, because if that stuff is gonna be coming out to our landfill in the town of Holland, there'll be a lot of people up in arms. And I think that they have done, they've done their due diligence in trying to get things back to where they should have been, and there's always failure of something, whether it's environmental, whether it's the mechanical end of it, but you're gonna have failure. But are they oblivious to the fact that, you know, they're hurting people? No, I think they're concerned, and I think they're trying to do a good job. So I can sympathize with both sides, but don't cut your nose off to spite your face here. This is what's been going on. They have legitimate gripes, you have legitimate gripes, but sit down in a calm manner and let them work with you, because the minute you start pushing, we may end up with a lot more than we wanted to. Thank you.
Thank you. Please hit your yellow button.
Yellow.
Supervisor Buckley, on referral.
Yes, I, sorry I haven't attended your meeting, Supervisor Evans. Didn't receive any calls really in reference to this. My office is two blocks from the plant, and occasionally we get a small whiff. Maybe it was just because of where the stack is, we don't...I don't notice it, to be honest with you. What's that? The, not to say, maybe just because of where, how the stacks work, that goes over us, goes to higher ground, but to be honest with you, I'd like to actually spend a little bit more time, I hope, for a referral. I'd like to talk to the two aldermen in reference to it, but I also like to see a little bit more from the Human Services as far as the complaints and how the numbers, what's been happening. Trying to read the notes, didn't really tell me as much as I'd like to see. And Supervisor Zima and just now Supervisor Clancy, I think, brought some excellent points. Are you gonna slap on the wrist every day? We're actually gonna sit down and figure out a solution. I've been told that, when I've inquired previously, that they're working or have been doing some upgrades to take care of this problem. But those two supervisors hit it right in the head, we gotta work with them, 'cause a little fine here or there is just a cost of doing business. So anyhow, I'd be for referral, and I actually encourage it. Thank you.
Thank you. Please hit your yellow button. Supervisor Stefan.
Yes, thank you. You know, I'm okay with referral on that, but I agree with Supervisor Evans that, you know, we're elected to handle this issue, and so to expect our residents to do our job, which is to bring forth this issue and debate it, and hopefully convince enough people to support it, I don't know if that's necessarily, should be the way we vote, is how many people are in the gallery, okay, well, then I guess we support this, so now there's no one here tonight, I guess we oppose it. You know, there's, the impact zone involved with this issue is probably ten to fifteen percent of this county. And certainly, I understand that for those who live outside of that impact zone, it's hard for you to understand. You're not dealing with it every day. So if someone says, hey, I'm fixing this, and look it, I can show you that, we spent X amount of dollars, then you'd say, yeah, you must be working on this problem and it must be solved, or it's on its way to solution. Well, this chart, which I have never seen before, which is the actual complaint listing from the county, I think speaks a different story. It indicates that we have an issue that is ongoing, it's getting worse, and it deserves our attention. The people of the west side of Green Bay, Hobart and Howard, are begging for your help. We are the body that is responsible for handling this issue. We can push it off to others, make it a municipal issue, whatever it may be, but at the end of the day, we have to be, take responsibility for this. And I hope for those of you who don't live in those three communities, if you live in Aloe, DePere, Ledgeview, Pulaski, wherever you may live, just because you're outside of that thirty thousand people that are impacted zone, I hope you'll have at least a bit of understanding, compassion for what they're going through. And it's not just residents. We talk about them as a business, and they are, you know, they do employ people, and that is good, but what about the other companies that are around them that are being affected? Talk to Belson, talk to Woodman's, talk to Menards, talk to the ten to thirty million-dollar economic development zone we have on the other side, Forty-One in Howard, that we're gonna struggle the market. I mean, do not the other employers in the area have a right to operate within a zone free of that type of odor? Do not the property owners who live in that area? And this isn't just the, you know, the old lady who lives down the corner who complains every week. We're talking thirty thousand people range. There's people, I live a mile and a half away from it, and I smell it at my house. So this, hey, you know, you move in next door to something, you gotta get used to it. I'm talking a large... I'm talking a large area, this is a large radius. So please, have a little bit of respect for those people who are dramatically affected by that. And Mr. Evans, Supervisor Evans brings up an important point. You know, and it relates to some of the comments. I think we should be mindful as to what the representatives from Sanamax said as we move forward and think about this, as to how genuine they are with their thoughts and remarks. And I can point out two quick things. One is, he mentioned that the solution that was brought before the committee was, quote, "Done with balancing stakeholder, balancing stakeholder interests." You all heard that, balancing the stakeholders' interest is what the compromise that you saw before you was determined. Do you know who is a, though, part of that balancing stakeholder interest? All it was, was the offenders. It was the chamber, and invited only the businesses that are possibly affected by this. There wasn't a single representative from the village of Howard, there wasn't a single representative from this body, there wasn't a single representative from the Health Department, there wasn't a single resident. And yet he just came up here and tried to sell you that there was some sort of big kumbaya, we all sat down together and came up with this compromise.
So you're for a referral?
The other, the other point that I wanted to make.
Are you for a referral, yes, or are you?
Yes, I am, sir. I am, I am.
Because we're, it's a little cloudy.
I, I, I am for, I am for referral, yes, thank you. So, you know, I, I think, and then the other issue being that we've been here for 130 years. Please be aware that this company is no longer locally owned, is owned by an out-of-country corporate multinational corporation. Now, has that affected things? I don't know. Does it correlate closely with this chart that shows the complaints increasing? I don't know. But it should be noted that it's not the same small, little, locally owned, locally controlled, local interest organization. So, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Stefan. On referral, Supervisor Lavaila.
I can live with or without referral, but first of all, I would like to encourage Supervisor Robinson to put in a communication recommending that we do operate and vote on resolutions rather than pulling things from the minutes of a committee, because I, I really don't think that's a way to give good notice to our constituents. If we refer to either the committee or the full board, I'm not terribly confident that we're going to have any more information than we've had, than we have tonight, because our committee has worked on this for over a year and a half. I've voted against the resolution at the committee level, and I would vote against it again tonight, because I sincerely believe that Sanamax has been showing a good faith effort to deal with the order issues. I've never believed in putting people in corners or hitting them over the head with clubs is a way to achieve anything positive. And since I see this positive movement or actions with Sanamax, I'd like to continue that, because I quite agree with Supervisor Zima, going from three to two is ridiculous. So, I, I, I don't care if we refer it back or not, but honest to God, what new information are we going to have in December that we don't have right now?
Thank you. If you could please hit your yellow button. Supervisor Hop.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to clarify, when I, you know, in regards to the, my challenge to the citizenry, I don't expect, you know, I don't put the onus on the citizens to come here and lobby us and, and sell us on this idea. I think this is pretty, pretty much clear-cut. We have been dealing with this for the last year and a half. My point being is if the company in question, the only reason we're talking about referral is because legal counsel for the company made a point that there wasn't enough notification. Otherwise, we'd have dealt with this tonight and we'd be done with it.
Well, our court, well, you had two lawyers with two different ideas.
Whatever. And they strongly whatever, and they were gonna adamantly and vehemently, and this, whatever, they were gonna continue to fight it. So, fine, we'll refer it. And my point being is that, fine, that gives us two more months, now the citizens can be well aware of it, they, we see how, what they want to do, so, fine, we'll refer it for you. Now the citizens should be aware of that, and make sure that they're here, so that they can say that to Sanamax. And for the Supervisors that think that we're the only people that are going through this, look it up! Montreal, Columbus, Vancouver, St. Paul, this isn't the only Sanamax plant in the world. Every single city that they're in deals with the same problem we are dealing with, and none of them get resolved. None. So, they're doing good faith, and it's, they're working hard, and they're making investments, and blah, 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 blah. That's what it is, blah, 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 blah. The technology exists to solve the problem. They were aware of the problem the day that they walked into the facility. Yes, they have spent a million dollars in the last year or year and a half. It's not enough. A million dollars will not solve the problem. Technology is out there. Other facilities in this very city that have similar types of businesses have solved, have solved the problem. How is that possible? It's not like some big secret, the technology's out there. It costs money. Where is the resolve from the company? If they were committed to solving the problem, they wouldn't have spent a million dollars, they would have spent five million and solved the problem, if that's what it takes. But it can be solved. You're right, Supervisor Zima, this ordinance is going to have zero impact on this whole thing. It's, it's a flash in the pan, it's whatever, you want it, whatever you want to call it. It's going to have zero impact. The only people that can solve this issue are Sanamax. Bring them to the table, let's talk with them, let's have a roundtable. Years we've been doing this, years and years, and for the last time that I've been on here, we've dealt with this almost every single month with no results. And now, okay, well, hey, if we break down, well, if you break down, shut down. Stop production. Alderman Sladek hit it right in the head. You don't get a free pass. When the city of Milwaukee accidentally dumps millions of gallons of sewage into the lake, they still get fined. You stop production. And either that, or I'd be going back on the people you bought the equipment from and saying, "Hey, your stuff failed." This isn't a problem that's unique to Brown County. It happens all over the place. It's not a problem that's unique to Sanamax. They're used to doing this, they're used to kicking the can down the road, they're used to investing this little bit, and then a little bit, and a little bit, and only as much as they need to, to get the people to finally shut up. But what happens is, the people don't shut up because the problem's solved, they just get worn out. Supervisor Evans hit it right on the head. People are just worn out. Well, you can call this number, I'm not calling. I've called, it's, what does it, what does it matter? And again, still, they can call, it's not going to solve the problem. The only people that can solve the problem are Sanamax. So, let's refer it, they want to refer it, we'll refer it, and hopefully, I'll reiterate it, hopefully the citizens turn out. Thank you.
Thank you. If you could hit your yellow button, please. Supervisor Castor, on referral.
I am in favor of referral. I guess, a lot of questions come up when, when this issue, I guess, there have been a lot of issues in this area with regards to this, and noise, or one way or another. I guess I've heard where this problem existed for 35 or 40 years, and continuously, I guess I'd have to ask, what the heck would you want to build next to that for? I've heard people complain about the airport, after they built next to the airport, they complained about the airplanes. There was a whole bunch of people that built next to 172 after 172 was there, and complained about the highway traffic noise. It drove them nuts. And they had a heck of a time selling their houses after that, because there was such publicity in the paper that they couldn't sell their houses. I've got pictures of Packerland packing when there was nothing anywhere around it, and yet people built all their houses next to it, and then they whined about Packerland packing. So I guess I would, the only thing that I can see really is if this Anamax, Sanamax, and I understand they used to be at a different location, were moved out to there, far enough outside the city limits, or whatever at that time, so that they wouldn't bother anybody. And I, and I understand there are probably houses that are there that are older than that problem. You know, I guess I'd have to know the radius that this covers. I don't, for Delsman Street, I've heard, you know, the far parts of Howard, and I really don't know. Supervisor Evans did answer some of that with regards to the businesses growing quite a bit, and I guess I don't know if their process has changed, or how much product that they handle, or a different kind of product that they handle, or, or just, just how much, I guess, or whatever, I guess. I, I guess I, I don't know if the radius has grown, the, the area, the stench, or whatever, out to a bigger area, and, or if the strength of it has grown, I guess I, I don't know. I do know where I live, I moved out to the country, and you gotta put up with a farmer spreading manure right next to your open windows and stuff, you know, and it makes your eyes water, let me tell you, you know. I don't know, I guess there are a lot of things, I, I don't know, I can't tell by looking at the minutes how much information is there. I do feel for these folks, I know we have problem, we had a problem in Bellevue with the noise coming from a business that was there, Little Rip, well, yeah, Little Rapids, and, and we got a lot of complaints, the business popped up after all the people were there, and there was a heck of a noise, and it took them a lot of money, and they had to hire a company to engineer some different components, and they're, and they're fixing it, you know. But I, I don't believe it's a, it's a problem where you can just shut it off and fix it. I don't think so. I do know when you, when you go by there lately, I could tell you that there's a heck of a smell on the highway. It makes you almost put your car in the ditch sometimes. But I haven't noticed it lately. I don't, I don't, probably the last couple of months, I haven't really noticed it. But I guess there's a lot of questions to be answered before I can really, you know, make a really good decision, but I think we should have all the players here, so I don't, I don't think giving them good enough notice and, and making sure all the folks are here from both sides and, and go at it, I guess, so, you know, I'm in favor of referrals, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please hit. Supervisor Van Dyke.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. I wasn't going to speak to this matter, but I didn't want to be the only one that didn't, so that's why I pushed my button. Being an accountant, I just can't let this pass, because Supervisor Stefan's referred to this chart on several occasions, and let's be cautious on how we use information. We heard from Supervisor Dwayne, we heard from Mr. Steyer, we heard from a number of other people that have lived in this area for years. This isn't a problem from the last three years, as this chart shows. The data on this chart, if you go back, has more to do with reporting issues than it has to do with the fact that all of a sudden in 2011, it starts to stink and it gets worse. So, let's not draw a lot of conclusions that this problem's getting worse by looking at this information, because to me, the information is faulty. Another point, I'm going to, I'm going to jump on the Love Fest wagon tonight for Mr. Zima, because I agree with him, to his comments that he, that he made earlier, and I'm, and to something that, that Mr. Hop said, this is kind of tongue-in-cheek, but this whole ordinance stinks. The way we report, the number of reports, how we measure, the whole thing is just, it's out of whack, and it needs to be reworked. And to, as Mr. Hop says, passing this is, it's a feel-good thing. It's like, hey, we did something for you folks, we made it two, but it's not going to change anything. So, I'm against referral, because I'd like to vote it down tonight, because in my personal opinion, this isn't going to change anything, and I'm not going to vote for something that's feel-good. And I guess if this is a serious issue, and, and the Supervisors that represent this district, or the Aldermen that represent this district want to bring something forward that's got some teeth, that's actually going to make a difference, then I guess have the guts to bring forward something that says, "You know what, it's a $100,000 fine," or "It's a $500,000 fine." Okay? Because that's the only thing that's going to make it, and I'm not supporting that, but I'm just saying to sit here and say, "Well, let's make this go from three to two," because we can then go back to our constituency and say, "Well, we tried, we did something for you," to me is a waste of time. Thank you.
Thank you. If you please hit your yellow button. Second Zim, uh, second time Supervisor Zima. On referral.
This is the first time on referral.
On referral.
This is the first time on referral, I can talk once more yet, but I, I won't.
Thought I got you.
I'll confine my remarks to just one time, Mr. Chairman.
Very well.
I, I really think that this has to be sent to Human Services Committee.
Is that your motion?
Well, I don't know, I don't know where you referred it to. What was the motion?
Well, it's to the December County Board meeting.
Well, I think it needs to go there first, I guess I'd like to amend it, to send it to both, you know, if that would be acceptable friendly amendment there.
Just make a motion to send it back to the Human Services, please.
But, but really, the purpose, the purpose of sending it there is that I think you have to, is...
Is that your motion? Is that your motion, to refer back to Human Services?
Well, and to the December County Board meeting, but...
Well, it'll eventually, out of, out of committee, they can make that motion, whatever that might be.
The original motion was they didn't want it to come at our budget meeting.
Correct.
So I want to keep that element in there yet, to send it back to committee to report back to us in December.
Yes, and they'll do that out of committee.
Well, can we just do that as a friendly amendment here, or?
Just make the motion and I'll accept the second.
Okay, well, that's my motion. That's, that's my motion.
Okay, we have a motion made by Supervisor Zima, seconded by Supervisor Vanderlees. Under discussion, you settle the floor.
Okay, well, I mean, and it's, it's for a reason, though. It's, it's to find a more substantive approach to solving the problem. I mean, I, I love all the love I'm getting here tonight, but, you know, it really doesn't take brain science to figure this thing out. And I mean, I mean, do you understand that moving it from three to two, I know Mr. Clancy was very modest and probably didn't want to have to defend himself, but, you know, I'm going to go stick my neck out for him. I mean, if it's, if things goes from three to two, you could put the Clancy farm out of business. I mean, can you imagine if a couple city slickers moved out near his farm and didn't like the smell of manure? It's over.
That is not...
$500 a day.
That's exempt from this ordinance, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm just trying to put a little, uh...
Supervisor Zima has the floor.
I'm, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have gone that where, way, but, you know, another thing is, you know, I, I, some people wanted to not have minutes, you know, just have reporting out of what had happened. We've had so much discussion here tonight, and of course, all this kind of discussion should be in the minutes somewhere of what goes on at a meeting. So I, I think we voted that idea down of not having any minutes. But I mean, that's what you got a committees for, that's what you have extensive minutes. I was always in favor of extensive minutes, not repeating things over and over. But I'm saying, it would, it would have helped our meeting here tonight, because the minutes are pretty sketchy. But, you know, I think the only thing that's really going to work is that we have ongoing communication, you know, between the neighborhood, the government, and Sanamax, and keep, keep talking on a month-to-month basis, we've done these things in the past. We did it with Grand Tech, I know, in, when I had the problem in my district in the city of Green Bay, we met every month until we got the progress, and gee, over the course of six months or so, we, we came to some, got something done. And I, I think you've got to keep the communication going. I mean, this three-to-two business is like desperation, it's, and meaningless, that's what we're talking about, so. And, you know, the idea that, well, stop production when you get a problem, well, let me see, how does that work? Oh, all the rotting carcasses, when the machinery breaks, we don't finish processing it that day, we just leave it sit there and stink for days and days and days. I mean, you know, sometimes we talk kind of ridiculous. I think people are trying to, you know, we want them to improve, but I think it's important that we know the whole story and that we keep on some kind of communication with them, and I think it needs to be done on a month-to-month basis, or every other month basis, so that it stays on the forefront, you keep communication, you, you, you don't make unnecessary bad statements about a company, but you don't whitewash them either, because, I mean, obviously, if they've spent that kind of money, they've done something. It's not enough, according to, I guess, most people's opinion here, but how do you get them to do it without communication and working with them? It certainly isn't... It certainly isn't with some kind of ordinance that says, oh, if we get some verifiable complaints, we can fine you under the nuisance ordinance. Wow. So, anyway, I'd like to see it go back to the committee, and get something substantive coming out of it, and let's try to solve the problem in some way that will actually solve the problem, rather than, you know, put the Clancy farm at jeopardy.
Thank you, Supervisor Zima, if you could hit your yellow button, please.
Okay.
On referral. Supervisor Seber.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'll keep my comments to referral, and I've got a question, though, are we talking, when referring to Human Services, are we referring to the budget meeting next week, or referring it to a separate November? Separate November, Human Services meeting, just to make sure it's clear for the citizenry that may appear.
It'll be towards the December Board meeting.
Wonderful, thank you. And then my comment, just in the interest of good government, I think Sanamax has asked for a delay in the final vote on that, I don't see any reason why we can't grant it to them, everybody in favor or against is conceded, this problem's not going to go away in two months, the windows are going to start being closed, we're going to be receiving less complaints, so I'm certainly in favor of referral, thank you.
Thank you. No lights are lit, we have a motion to refer back to Human Services Committee, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. By voice vote, the ayes have it. Correct, and from there, they'll send it forward to the Board in December. Correct.
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to invite all the members of this county board to be at the Human Services Committee.
Duly noted, Chairman Evans. Okay, we're moving on. Moving on to eight, we still got a lot of agenda, folks. Moving on to other reports, eight A, Treasurer's Financial Report. Motion made by Supervisor Vanderlyse to receive and place on file, seconded by Supervisor Hoyer, under discussion. Seeing no lights are lit, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, that passes unanimously. Eight B, Treasurer's Financial Report. Motion made by Supervisor Castor, received, seconded by Supervisor Katers, under discussion. Seeing no lights are lit, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes unanimously. We move on to standing committee reports, versus nine A, Report of the Administration Committee. I have a motion to approve by Supervisor Vanderlyse, seconded by Supervisor Laviolette, is there anything to be pulled separately out of the report, anything separately? Hearing none, all those in favor signify...
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it unanimously. Nine B, Report of the Education Recreation Committee. I have a motion to approve by Supervisor Dwayne, seconded by Supervisor Katers, under discussion, any, well, rather, anything to be pulled separately? Seven and eight, anything else? Seven and eight. Supervisor Erickson. Hearing none, all those in favor, the remainder of the report signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes. Supervisor Erickson, you have the floors. Number seven, Budget Status Financial Report.
Thank you, we just made a mention of minutes, in some cases, not continuing certain things, and it says Budget Status Financial Report for August, hell for one month!
They didn't have a report. It wasn't included in the package.
Okay, that was what I want, so I'll make motion to...
Approve.
Approve, or, received and placed on file, there was no report.
That's fine. Motion made by Supervisor Erickson, seconded by Supervisor Van Dyke, under discussion. Seeing no lights are lit, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes unanimously. Number eight, Supervisor Erickson, Discussion to Approve the Golf Course to Move Forward with Putting Its Land, Extra Land Up For Sale.
I'm kind of hearing a couple of different things, and I guess I need clarification, if we, that land was originally purchased, I believe, to put in an extra nine holes? So, if we had problems on the golf course, like we did this year with the greens and so forth, that you could divert some of the traffic into those other holes? Not 100% clear on that, but I wanted a little clarification on it. And then it says we're looking at selling it, and I agree, if we got excess land, that we can make some money on, we should, I think we're making a few hundred dollars to a thousand dollars rental to agriculture on that, which may or may not be okay, depending on what we end up selling it for. Considering the fact that a lot of it is, according to the minutes and that, a lot of it is wetlands and that, it's not of a great value to anybody else either, I don't know if, maybe we should look real close at what we really want to do with it, and if we do sell it, I'm always under the impression that any sales actually, the money that comes back actually is handled through administration and dealt with? Am I correct on that, that departments just can't sell land and keep the money?
No, that's the general...
That's what I'm saying, the way this was described is that this would be split up in different funds in the golf course, so I was just curious what our policy is.
Well, that was the discussion of the evening, but the motion is to refer to Corporation Council to check into the easement issue and complete a survey of the areas.
Okay. Motion to approve, then.
I have a motion to approve by Supervisor Erickson, seconded by Supervisor Vanderlyse, under discussion. Supervisor Vanderlyse.
I'm going to try to address all the items. When the golf course was built in the 50s, there was discussion about building another nine holes. That was never done because of the competition and the additional cost to do so, so the county never pursued another nine holes of golf, so, you know, to say you could direct people to, you know, using that additional nine holes, the cost of designing, the cost of doing the golf course, the additional cost of maintaining that nine holes, and just, you know, the added costs with the low benefits, that's out, so, that additional nine holes is not on the table, it hasn't really been on the table for probably about 30 years. Second, you know, the proceeds from the land, the golf course is running a negative balance right now, it has since 2008, we've talked about this earlier, some of the monies could be used to pay back some of that negative balance to the county. This year's revenue is down about 50 to 60%, I've heard, estimates because of the golf course with the greens, so, and then we'd like to be able to kind of, you know, if you sold the land, you'd be able to put the money also towards future savings for, you know, smaller projects, if we get into a negative balance in the future, that we've got a little bit more savings for the future. So, that's the idea for the land, and then I think the third part was where the proceeds would go, and I kind of touched on that already, but it's an enterprise fund, the golf course has owned the land, Scott Anthes is not here, but the discussion has been, the monies would go towards the golf course for projects at the course, for, you know, paying down debt that, you know, that the golf course owes, so, that's some of the discussion, it's not, you know, it's not been determined, you know, it's not being put out for sale, but we would not go and use, we would not use a real estate agent, we would utilize our County Corporation Council. By state law, they can receive and write offers, and write counteroffers, and negotiate for sale land attorneys can in Wisconsin, so, we would utilize that, save the, save some of the costs for, that would be, you know, say like commission costs, so that 5%, 6% would be saved for the taxpayer. The discussion is that, hey, why would we keep the land if we're, you know, if we have these other needs, and you want to create a kind of a piggy bank for the future, and that's why we're bringing it up, I think it's the right thing to do. If people have further questions, they can contact me or Scott Anthes at the golf course, but that's the direction we're moving. The motion is to deal with an easement issue, and then also look at some of the parcels and getting what parcels we'd want to sell, and have some of that stuff cleaned up before we go to sale, so.
Exactly. Thank you, Supervisor Vanderlyse, anyone else on this? If not, we have a motion to approve, number eight, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes unanimously. Moving on, nine C, Report of Executive Committee of October 7th.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion made by Vice Chairman Lund to approve, seconded by Supervisor Seber, under discussion, or rather, is there anything to be pulled separately from the report? Seeing no lights are lit, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes unanimously. Ten C, Aye, Report of the Special Executive Committee of this evening.
Mr. Chair, if you can...
Supervisor Vanderlyse.
I'm not, I'm not going to talk.
Oh, I'm sorry, my apologies, my apologies. Well, this is just the report.
This is a report.
Motion to approve by Vice Chairman Lund, are we ready to have the motion, under discussion? This is pertaining to the resolution for the change in the Table of Organization, which will take up in resolutions. All those in favor of the report signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Who seconded that?
Supervisor Vanderlyse.
Supervisor Vanderlyse. Moving on to nine D, Report of the Human Services Committee of September 25th, Motion to Approve by Supervisor Hop, do I have a second? Seconded by Supervisor Van Dyke, anything to be pulled separately out of the report? Seeing no lights are lit, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes unanimously. Nine E, Report of the Planning Development Transportation Committee, Motion by Supervisor Erickson to Approve, seconded by Supervisor Dantin, anything to be pulled separately out of the report? Seeing no lights are lit, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes unanimously. Nine E I, Report of the Land Con, Motion to Approve by Supervisor Landwehr, seconded by Supervisor Seber, was that? Anything to be pulled separately out of the report? Seeing no lights are lit, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes unanimously. Nine F, Report of the Public Safety Committee, Motion made by Supervisor Clancy to approve, seconded by Supervisor Zima, anything from the report to be pulled separately? Seeing no lights are lit, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes unanimously. We move on to Resolutions. Ten A, From the Administration Committee, Executive Committee, Human Services, Planning, Development, and Public Safety, Resolution Reclassification of Positions Clerk/Typist One, Clerk One, Typist One. Motions are to approve at all entities, I have a motion to approve by Supervisor Castor, seconded by Supervisor Katers, and under discussion. Supervisor Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to oppose this, partly because it seems to me that when we look at adjusting these positions and their salaries, we are consistently hitting the bottom range of comparables in these areas, and that bothers me that we're constantly moving to the bottom range on these, especially when we are supposedly in the middle of a classification and compensation study that would look at how we are doing relative to other, into public entities and private organizations. So, it just bothers me that we're looking at these hourly positions at the lower end and moving them even lower within the range. I know, I realize it saves money of the county, and that may all be well and good in the long run, but doing that absence of a bigger sense of the picture of what we want to do with our compensation packages seems to me moving in the wrong direction. We're going to handle, we're going to bring up a position later where we're looking at moving it to the higher end of the range, because that's what it takes to hire somebody, I understand that, but again, those decisions are being made independent of a study that supposedly is just around the corner, so I'm going to oppose this.
Thank you. If you could hit your yellow button, please? Thank you. Vice Chairman Lund.
Yeah, I just want to be brief on this, but Human Resources is looking at the positions and saying, this is the range, when they look at the private sector, they look at this range, this is what we can hire people for. We're not talking about anybody that's in the job right now getting their wages taken away, we're looking at taking the confusion of so many classifications of clerk typist and putting them in a single class that makes sense for the duties that they do. Human Resources is going with an ongoing study, that's fine, but they do day-to-day business, and they come to us. Yes, the results of the study should be in next year, but these are important steps, and we can't say, don't do this job, just come to us with the overall study, and then we'll just pick apart the whole thing. These are important steps that they're coming to us, and I think we should give this serious consideration and vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you. No other lights are lit. We have to use the Board, because there seems to be dissension on this vote. Supervisor Seber, Supervisor Dwayne, Supervisor Erickson, there we are, Supervisor Evans, Supervisor Clancy. And that appears, everyone?
Evans.
Supervisor, no, we have. Supervisor Phil. And that passes 21 to 2, three absent. Thank you. Thank you. Moving on, ten B, From both the Administration Committee and the Executive Committee, Resolution of Reclassification of Information Services Director, Both motions at each committee was to approve. I have a motion to approve by Supervisor Van Dyke, seconded by Supervisor Campbell, under discussion. Under discussion. Seeing no lights are lit, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. It has to be on the agenda this evening. The Executive Committee, there was a proclamation, was received and placed on file pertaining to workplace bullying. We have a motion to approve, seconded by Supervisor Evans. Under discussion.
What was the motion?
To approve the proclamation by Supervisor Laviolette, under discussion. You want to approve the proclamation, not receive and place on file?
I would like that.
Correct. It still had to come to the full Board with our rules from a few years back.
This is... No, it is. The whole Board can have it.
It can't die at committee, the whole Board has the opportunity. Supervisor Laviolette has asked us to approve the proclamation, there are no other lights lit.
From the head of Human Resources.
Well, I think what she's going to tell you, they're working on that issue that she communicated to you previously, correct? It's still not added to our ordinances yet.
This is...
No. This was an email from an outside entity.
Right.
Anything further on the proclamation, Supervisor Laviolette?
Actually, I haven't seen it, so, let's receive and place on file.
We have a motion received and placed on file by Supervisor Laviolette, seconded by Supervisor Erickson, under discussion. Seeing no lights are lit, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Human Services Committee, ten E, Resolution Northeast Wisconsin Long-Term Care District Resolution Authorizes NEW Family Care.
About D.
Oh, I'm sorry, my apologies. Resolution Reclassification of Physician Health Department Health Aid, now I'll accept the motion to approve, made by Supervisor Hop, seconded by Supervisor Campbell, under discussion. Supervisor Evans.
I need the next one, I'm sorry.
Okay, could you hit your yellow button, please? Supervisor Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My comments to the previous position, reworking of the pay range go for this, I just find it interesting on this particular one, that the pay range is within, they mentioned the starting salaries for public entities, and the starting salary for a placement agency, which is higher than what we're actually suggesting is the starting range for us, so it strikes me that sometimes we go with the public entities ranges, when those are the lower ones, and sometimes we go with the public agencies or private industry, when those are the lower ones. And so, it just seems like we're just sort of picking whichever the range we want to pick in order to get to the lowest part of what we want to pay people, and that just seems odd to me. I understand Supervisor Lund had used the phrase, what we can hire people for, or something like that, what we can get people to work for and pay them, I'm not sure that's always the criteria that we need to be using. Sometimes I think we need to also consider what is a decent wage for a decent day's work, so I'm going to be voting against this as well.
Thank you. If you get your yellow button, please.
Yep, sorry. I get that one these days.
Anyone else on the resolution? Madam Clerk, if you please put the Board up. This is on ten D, Reclassification of Position of the Health Department Health Aid. This is on 10D, reclassification of position of the Health Department, Health Aid. For what's in the newspaper is for legal notice. Need a lot of votes out there, folks. Supervisor Landwehr, Supervisor- Well, I'm still waiting for votes. And that appears to be everyone? Vice Chair? There we go. And that passes 22 to 1. I know, I know. Moving on to 10E, Human Services Committee, resolution, Northeast Wisconsin Long-Term Care District, County Board Resolution Authorizes N E W Family Care to Enter in Contract with the Department of Health Services. I have a motion to approve by Supervisor LaViolet, seconded by Supervisor Hoyer. Under discussion. Supervisor Evans.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This just, this is a formality, as the County Board has already said we would support and move into family care, and Human Services has already been implementing everything and all that stuff. But I just have to do a couple of changes, and I'll give this to the clerk, went through this with Director Crawl, and, and so in the, what is it, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6th, whereas, where goes to authorize N E W Family Care to bid on the contract, strike that and put enter into a contract. And then on item 5 on the next page here, after into a contract with DHS, in parentheses, we'd have and participate in all bidding or proposal activities associated therewith, parentheses, blah, blah, blah. And then item 6, obviously Brown County. So I need to make those. Thank you.
A motion made by Supervisor Evans, seconded by Supervisor Van Der Leest. Under discussion. Could you hit your yellow light, please? On the amendment to what's before us, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Now on the amendment- We have a motion made by Supervisor Evans to approve as amended, seconded by Supervisor Van Der Leest. Under discussion. Supervisor Phil.
I did hear some of the amendments, but did we fill in all the blanks?
Yes.
Is that part of the amendment, or? Because there's a lot of blanks on here, and I think maybe we should fill the blanks in on a resolution.
Anything further Supervisor Phil? Yeah, good, good call. No other lights are lit, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Moving on, Planning, Development, and Transportation, resolution amending the Brown County Farmland Preservation Plan. Motion made by Supervisor Dantin to approve, seconded by Supervisor Seber. Under discussion. Seeing no lights are lit, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. 10G, ordinance amending Schedule A of the Brown County Code entitled Speed Limits. Motion was to approve at PDNT. I have a motion to approve by Supervisor Castor. Do I have a second? Seconded by Supervisor Erickson. Under discussion. Under discussion. Seeing no lights are lit, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. 10H, resolution authorizing County Trunk Highway Jurisdictional Divisions on County Highway FF in the Village of Howard in Brown County, Wisconsin. Motion to approve by Supervisor Landwehr, seconded by Supervisor Stefan. Under discussion. Under discussion. No lights are lit, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. 10I, resolution accepting recommendations of Port and Resource Recovery Department Financial Analysis. The motion at PDNT was to approve. I have a motion to approve by Supervisor Seber, seconded by Supervisor Clancy. Under discussion. Seeing no lights are lit, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Under the Public Safety and Special Executive Committee meeting, the resolution was changing table of organization, Public Safety Communications Telecommunication Operator One. Motion, motion was to approve of Public Safety. At the Special Executive Committee meeting, the motion was to approve, made by Supervisor Evans, seconded by Supervisor Erickson. It was approved unanimously. Under discussion. Supervisor Seber.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've got a, I've got a few questions on this resolution. I don't know who's the appropriate person to answer them.
Cullen's here.
So we're, it, this appears to me as I'm reading this, we're taking 10 telecommunicator operators, the next 10 that we hire, and we're going to put them at a lower wage until there's an opening. Is that, is that correct? That's correct. Do we have a probationary period for these telecom operators on top of this lower wage?
Can you come up front, Cullen? Who, I'm sorry, who made the original motion?
I made the motion.
Vice Chairman Lund, thank you.
So there's a probationary period on top of a lower wage with the 10 bottom?
Telecommunicator operators, is that right? Okay. And these tele, these 10 at the bottom aren't guaranteed to move up until there's an opening ahead of them, no matter how long they've been there, or how well they're qualified, how well they're doing, is that right?
That's correct.
Can you, can anybody explain the reasoning why we're taking 10 off the bottom and?
Well, the reasoning is, is the turnover rate that we have, and you can anticipate- Probably 10 a year. So what we're doing is, we're hiring these people and we're losing a lot of these people in that first year. In fact, the first group that we hired before I started over here, we've lost all but one right now, and that was a group of, I believe, four or five. So, and what we're doing is we're spending six months training these people, or even more, at, at the reg, at the regular telecom rate, and they're turning around and leaving us. And we're, we're putting all our efforts in that and all our money into that, and basically, if we lose them in the first six months, it's pretty much wasted money. So that, and-
Is for them?
But they're not getting a probationary rate. And at, at the, at the bottom, at the bottom of the-
The regular scale.
Oh, the regular scale, yeah.
Supervisor Seber?
Probationary periods, not probationary rates.
So, okay. I'd, I'd like to make a motion to refer this back to Public Safety and make this turn into a probationary rate, rather than taking the bottom 10 arbitrarily and not giving them a raise until-
I have a motion to refer back to Public Safety by Supervisor Seber, seconded by Supervisor Evans. Under discussion of referral. Supervisor Robinson.
Clarification on this, thank you, Mr. Chairman. If the intention is to send it back to PDT in order-
Public Safety.
Public Safety, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah. My apologies. Send it back to Public Safety. Send it back to Public Safety. If the intention is to get rid of the provision that they can only move up to a regular wage when an opening occurs, I would support that. Because I think what needs to happen is, I can understand being on a probationary wage for a while, we don't want to train people, then they leave and we lose that. But it seems to me that they should move up to the regular, the current regular wage when they're ready, skill-wise, or a certain period of time is over. But to wait for an opening seems to punish, in fact, if we've spent all this time training, we've got a two-year-old employee and they can't move up because nobody's leaving, then we're going to, that's really going to guarantee that they leave. So it seems to me we need to put a target on when they get to a fully functioning level, and then they can move into that wage without waiting for an opening. Yeah, that's what we talk about, we talk about it all the time, pay for performance. All right, well, I, I don't have a, if, I don't know if I can put that concisely, but I guess I would make a motion that we substitute the employee waiting until an opening occurs in whatever the technical term is for these levels of employment. Yeah, they get the regular wage when they're proficient in their duties, in the, in the- Yeah, I will, maybe.
Do I have a second on that? I have a motion made by Supervisor Robinson to amend the resolution. Right, and it's seconded by Supervisor LaViolet. So we're going to discuss from that point on. Supervisor Robinson, can you hit your yellow button, please? Supervisor Seber? On the motion.
I'd say I'd definitely support that motion, it accomplishes everything. We'll just take the time to do it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Van Der Leest.
I guess I'm, I'm opposed to this kind of blanket, just opposed to HR's ideas and the department head's ideas about how to manage their, their workforce. They've brought these ideas forward. I haven't even had the chance where he can fully explain it, but I'm opposed to the motion because I just, this is kind of like this blanket idea, like, I'm opposed to, you know, making changes to different wage, wages, or whatever the department head is trying to do to manage their workforce. This seems reasonable, but I'd like for him to explain it again so the board can understand it.
That we are getting people up into those positions that are, that are fully qualified, they met the, they've met the number of dispatch positions, and that they have the appropriate training, and they show an initiative. So they're, they're getting promoted into that position, rather than just being given a raise because they've been there in the seat a year. So that, that's the goal here, is to try to get that, so that we're getting the, the best performers into that telecom operator position. We'll give them, everybody the same opportunities to get to that, and the better performers will move into that telecom operator rate. And that we're not paying those during their initial training period, that full wage that are, that basically they're making a, just a, just a little bit less than what our, our, you know, long-term employees are making right now.
Better way to put it? Not a train, like, there's a period-
It's an entry-level wage. And they can get promoted into the next level by meeting the standards that we set out for them.
Be entering your system. Okay.
Yeah. And that keeps that constant?
Constant, because I, I think it just makes more sense that they would be at that, that introductory rate. When, then when they're going to the next level is when they've reached proficiency, and then after, after that, then that's a probationary period for six months, then they can go to another full, higher rate, is that correct? So- Pages as you start, and then what, what can you go to the top areas?
Start at the, at the 1719, that's at the bottom of the range. And then when they would promote into that, into the next position, they would start at the, that, the bottom of that pay grade, which is, I can't remember what the bottom of that pay grade, it's not in there.
I think, one of the things you've got to keep in mind is that, as, as we're changing the culture and how we're operating our, our operations, we're trying to find and, and set the stage that for performance, think about in the, if you're working for a manufacturer, or if you're working in a certain industry, you start off with a, in a certain pay grade or a certain level. And through your accomplishments, your ability to show to the, the employer in your division or wherever you work, that your performance, you eventually can move up when there's openings. This is no different of what we're trying to accomplish here. The second thing, that this has really been part, not just from administration, this is actually being driven by some of the staff out at the tele, out at the 911 Center, because there, you have some people that have been there for a long time, who put in their time, who've learned the operations, that have become very proficient in their operation, who said it, it's not necessarily fair if I've put in 20 years or 15 years, that now a new person who doesn't have the background and the training that I've gone through, to be earning the same wage that I'm earning. They should have to go through the training and, and earn that opportunity through performance. And what we're attempting to do here is recognize that when we come into the system, that you have to earn your way to move up. And this is one way for us to address it. And you've got to keep in mind that the county is made up of multiple different departments, not each department is equal. And we want to make sure that we're looking at, how do we get to a point where we're, we're looking at that individual who's performing, we recognize that, versus bringing it down to the person that, all right, let's not work hard because we know that each year we're going to get treated the same. This is a change in, in behavior and, and culture for how operations are moved. And this is one step of how we can accomplish that in one division. Now, if you look at some of our older divisions, it's not going to be the similar circumstances because of what to be, of what, what, how it operates and how their funding comes through.
Anything further Supervisor Van Der Leest? Thank you. You hit your yellow button, please. On the motion to amend, Supervisor Buckley. No. Supervisor Robinson amendment. No, Supervisor Robinson made the, he, you wrote out your- Supervisor Buckley- I never accepted a referral. Supervisor, oh, no. Supervisor Buckley, you have the floor.
I guess I have to disagree with what they're trying to do right now. I mean, if you want to go and change the wage structure-
Can you use your microphone Supervisor Buckley? Thank you.
I would disagree with trying to change the wage structure right now at this meeting. I think that if we're going to do a change, let's send it back so that the, the staff can take a look at it, because maybe this isn't the solution. But at, at 10:30 at night, to try to change the wages on how it's going to affect someone's budget, I don't think it's appropriate time. I mean, if you really want to look at what's appropriate and how to pay these people, you do need to pay the more experienced ones a different wage. And, and, but we voted down the step process as a county. And, and really, in, in certain positions, there should be the step process. Okay? This was what they came up with in lieu of that. It's, again, goes back to the committee work. Come to the committee, and if you have different suggestions, let's do it at the committee. But to change at 10:30 at night, I, I disagree. I guess I'd make the motion to refer back to Public Safety.
We have a motion to refer back to Public Safety by Supervisor Buckley, seconded by, seconded by, seconded by Supervisor Duane. Under discussion of referral. Supervisor Castor, on referral.
I'm not interested in the referral or anything, I'm not interested in the amendment. I am interested in the original motion. The idea to pay for, pay somebody because they're trained and they haven't moved up into a position that's not open, that, that happens every day in the business world, every single day. The position isn't open, you can't get paid more, you're not, you're not being paid for performance because you, you aren't in the position. You're being trained. And, and the idea of paying somebody for showing up for work, how long have you been, how, how many years have you been put in? How many years have you put in? How, how long have you worked somewhere? That, that's irrelevant. I, I, you're paid by performance, you're not, I, I agree with the original motion. I am not in agreement with any referrals or any amendments. I, I think what the, what the county exec is trying to do here, and change the mentality of how people should be paid more like in the business world. This is, and, and government does not pay people that way. And they should. But I'm not interested in referral.
Thank you Supervisor Castor. Supervisor Buckley, could you hit your yellow button, please? Supervisor Van Dyke, on referral.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to vote for referral because I think that's the best place to handle it. And I'm all for pay for performance, but I guess I'm a little confused how you can take 10 existing positions and just lower them a notch when, you know, I guess how long do they stay in those positions? Is that, could be a permanent position? I mean, it, it seems a little confusing to me. So I would ask Public Safety to just take it back up again. And I guess I would encourage Supervisor Buckley, I mean, if, if steps make sense in this area, then I'd say propose steps. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Van Dyke. Supervisor Van Dyke, could you hit your yellow button, please? Supervisor Robinson, on referral.
Chairman, I'll support referral, that's fine, we don't need to hash this out tonight. I mean, my only point is, what we've effectively done, and I understand why they want to do this, because I agree that there probably should be a training wage. My only point is, what we've done is, we've effectively lowered the wage permanently for 10 positions in that department. Now, we've couched it as a training thing, which is true, I understand that, but we've just taken 10 positions and we just lowered the wage on them, again. Which, how do we keep people in these positions if we're, if we're constantly losing folks because we've trained them and then they leave? We've just furthered, made that problem even worse, because we've created the incentive to go someplace else after they're trained because they're paying them less. So that, that doesn't seem to make any sense to me. So I, I think Public Safety Committee is a fine way to handle this, and I wrote this out, but I'll just give it to Supervisor Buckley as input, if you want it or not, doesn't matter. But I'll support referral.
Thank you Supervisor Robinson. And thank you for hitting your yellow button Supervisor Robinson. Supervisor Erickson, on referral.
Thank you. I, too, don't believe in referral. If we, if we can't vote for the original resolution here, I will support referral at that point. But like Supervisor Buckley said, there's a, there's a difference here between a person starting out and- out and we constantly hear it takes about two years to have one of these individuals absolutely up to speed, and with the, if I'm correct on this, I think there's traditionally about a thirty percent turnover. I'm like, nah, that's the last figures we had when we were discussing this some months ago. So, this isn't gonna take that long to get into that position. Now, I'll tell you what, this is, we're discussing this as putting these people into this pitiful, pitiful wage and salary structure. You're starting out with salary and fringes at fifty-seven-six. I'll tell you what, I might go off of Social Security and apply for one of these jobs. So, let's either not support referral and vote for the original resolution, or send it back and let Public Safety do their due diligence and send it back to us the same way it is right now. Thank you, and I pressed my yellow button.
Thank you Supervisor Erickson. Vice Chairman Lund on referral.
Yeah, I'm against, I'm opposed to referral also. I think, Supervisor Erickson's not for referral either. We've got a budget coming up, this was, the committee approved this, they thought it was a good idea, they know what the turnover is in the department, that these jobs aren't gonna be languishing for three or four years. Plus, did you look at what the qualifications for the job were? I'm not gonna disparage anybody, but the qualification was a high school diploma to make seventeen dollars an hour. Anybody with a high school diploma would love to make seventeen dollars an hour starting out at a job, and if you work there for a year and you become proficient, you get moved up into the next category and you make more money. It doesn't, this is not about a low wage and not a living wage and whatever, this is about a pretty good job with good benefits, and I think it's appropriate. I would urge my fellow supervisor, vote against referral, and let's go back to the main motion that was well thought out by the department head and HR, and let's approve the main motion, and let's get going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. No other lights lit.
Hit the yellow.
Thank you. No other lights are lit, all those in favor of referral signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
In the opinion of the chair, the nays have it. We have a roll call request. Vice Chairman Lund. Supervisor Clancy. And the nays have it. Well.
He withdrew it.
He withdrew? Supervisor Robinson withdrew?
He withdrew that motion because he said, "Let's go to referral."
A motion to approve the original resolution, seconded by Supervisor Erickson, under discussion. Bear with us one moment, we're- Correct. Okay, we're back to the original resolution. Any further discussion? We'll use the board on that. The original resolution. Supervisor Zima. Supervisor Clancy. And that passes seventeen to six. Moving on, such other matters as authorized by law. Do we have any late communications this evening? Supervisor Robinson.
And handle the genuine items only through resolutions and similar means.
Executive Committee? Supervisor Zima.
Mr. Chairman, I just, you know, we had a kind of a long discussion at our-
Hey, we're not done yet, folks.
We had kind of a long discussion at our last meeting regarding having a closed session to talk about labor negotiations, and I thought, well, why didn't, why haven't we done that at least for this meeting? And why wasn't the staff prepared to do it? I mean, the county board outside of the executive committee has been excluded from this process at this point in time, and while Mr. Fuel very diligently read the duties of the executive committee, he forgot to read the part of the ordinance that said, "Everything has to come to the county board for final approval." So, I mean, I don't know, I just, I thought you were going to take care of it, and I noticed I should have called you sooner, but I didn't think of it till today, really, that I didn't see the closed session here available for, even if it's just something brief, I thought it was something that should happen. So, what are we gonna do? At our budget meeting, we're gonna have a closed session about this, or are we just, we just accept whatever administration does? Have we, have we absolutely abdicated our position? Our rights? I'm not, I know that the executive committee had an opinion, but that opinion wasn't confirmed by this county board at all. So, I don't know, I just feel like, are we just losing our way that the administration, like Obama and them, they just kind of do everything upstairs there?
Anything further?
Under protest, I'm going to ask that all the bills over five thousand be read in detail. That's my form of, what do they call that?
Protest?
No, filibuster.
Oh.
No, just a joke.
Very well. Thank you Supervisor-
But I mean, Mr. Chairman, I'm serious about this. I thought by now you'd kind of gotten a hold of this matter, and I'm-
There was an effort, there was an effort by supervisors to have a special meeting, however, there wouldn't, could, nothing be spoken to in that special meeting because they're in negotiation for the represented.
Well, I understand that you could have had an executive meeting here tonight to talk about what's going on in negotiations and what it is, the direction that the executive committee gave, and do the rest of us concur with it? Maybe we do, maybe we don't, I don't know. I was not at the executive committee meeting, and, you know, we aren't required to attend all the meetings.
Correct.
You know, there was nobody from the board there at the Public Safety Committee meeting last time. I mean, I don't expect the other meetings, that's why we have minutes and everything else, but I just feel like we're slowly abdicating all our rights and responsibility, and this is probably one of the most important, because it determines kind of how we're gonna treat our represented employees as well as our nonrepresented. That's all I have to say, so I wish you would tend to this.
Thank you Supervisor Zima. Supervisor Robinson?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Pardon me? Nothing further? Any other late communication Supervisor Fuel?
Just, I've got a late communication, but I just want to respond quickly, and that's that everything does come back to this board, and you do have an opportunity to vote for that, and if you don't like what's there, you can vote that down. I think that's been the process since I've been on the county board, and so the executive committee did give direction to administration on that. We haven't abdicated any responsibility, none. We've abdicated no responsibility, we've taken full responsibility and gave them direction, and under the leadership of the chairman of the executive committee, Supervisor Lund and yourself, Mr. Chairman. I would just, just like for our own report, a full report on why the 911 Center was inoperable, why the backup plan took so long to implement, why law enforcement was not notified immediately, and what's being done to plan for this in the future so that this does not occur again.
To the Public Safety Committee, thank you. Supervisor Castor, late communication?
I would have to ask the same thing that Supervisor Zima asked. I know some mention was made about they're in negotiations, but normally, we were involved in what was going on in negotiations, what, you know, yeah, and there was none of that at all this time, and I know there was talk about the executive committee always decided, "That's a bunch of crap." We always, right, but we always, and I know that everybody here remembers, we met in meetings, you know, and we decided the full board.
All your points are duly noted, but this is a rehash of last month. Do you have anything new to offer?
No, I have nothing new.
I did do something about it. Anything further?
No.
Any other late communications? All accept the motion to pay the bills over five thousand. Made by Supervisor Clancy, seconded by Supervisor Lavilat, under discussion. So, you know, it's a lit, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. I have a motion to adjourn by Supervisor Buckley, seconded by Vice Chairman Lund. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. No. Nope.
Oh, it is, it is. And I've never, I've never heard of where the, I've never heard of that before. What the hell do I have to hit here? I'm not gonna hit anything. Normally, you have to hit that press, our pressing button. Our pressing button.